Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Timing is everything. I will call this June 3, 2024, meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. Thank you to everyone who is here with us this evening. Thanks to everybody watching online. We will start our meeting as we always do. If you're able, if you could please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, welcome to everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. We have a, we have a full agenda and a lot of important stuff going on this evening. I did want to start before we get into our agenda and the approval of the agenda, just recognizing and taking a moment to recognize Officer Jamal Mitchell from the Minneapolis Police Department, who lost his life this week in the line of duty. And it's sad. This is the second time since February we've been talking about this before a council meeting. And it just talks, it speaks of the work that police officers everywhere, certainly our police officers, the danger that they are in, the risks that they live with as part of their jobs every day, and sometimes the fate that befalls them. And it's sad and it's heartbreaking. The morning after it happened, I texted, traded texts with Mayor Frye and offered the full resources of the Bloomington Police Department and the city of Bloomington to help in any way. And I know that our Bloomington officers were down there shortly after the incident, helping out when they could. It's, as I said, something twice now in the last, since February. And as we know, council, this is not, this is becoming frequent, far too frequent, in the upper Midwest and certainly in Minnesota. And frankly, it has to stop. It has to stop. Gun violence in general is absolutely unacceptable. Gun violence against our public safety officers and officials absolutely must end. So if you'll join me in Bloomington, just remembering Officer Mitchell and his family and your prayers, and offering your support to our friends in Minneapolis, as we will continue to do that as we go forward. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of our agenda this evening, council. We have three introductory items. We have an introduction of new employees. We have our swearing in of our Growth Through Opportunity Program participants, and looking forward to hearing more about that. And then a proclamation regarding Pride Month. Our consent business is a beefy one this evening. I think we've got 24 items on it, 23, 24? 22, excuse me. A lot of folks, a lot of things on the consent agenda. Councilmember Loman has got that for us this evening. Under our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances, we have two official public hearings. The first is a vacation of public drainage and utility easements over on the east side related to our SIC property. Item 4.2 is the public hearing for Hunt Electric, their plating variants. Then we have two items under item four. First is a, they're related, obviously, in so many ways. Item 4.3 is the resolution related to the environmental assessment worksheet at Kennedy High School. And 4.4 is the resolution related to the environmental assessment worksheet at Jefferson High School. And so those are our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances this evening. Under our organizational business, item 5.1 is a discussion about leveraging our debt for our essential capital projects that we have on the docket. We're going to have a solid waste rate study presentation, and then recommendations for our 2024 Blooming Arts Partnerships Grants Awards. And I don't think it made the official agenda, but item 5.4 will wrap up, as we always do. Item 5.4 is our city council policy and issue update. I don't think it was on the published agenda. I don't think it's online, but I will add that in. So we'll officially change the agenda to include that as well. So that is our agenda this evening, council. Any additional changes or additions to our agenda this evening? With that, I will move approval of our agenda this evening.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. First up on our agenda is item 2.1 is our introduction of new employees. And I think we've got a number of new employees this week. On my list, I've got our CFO Lori Economy Shuler kicking us off, introducing her new staff members in the finance department. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. So first up is Samira Toshami.
Toshami.
Toshami. And Samira and her husband moved to the United States 26 years ago, and they haven't lived in Minnesota since. They have a son who lives in Washington DC, and they are currently members, or currently residents of Bloomington and enjoy our great city. Her background has always included customer service, among other things, and recently at her previous position as a disability examiner for the state of Minnesota. In her free time, she likes to cook, read, garden, decorate, and she loves nature, and always finds time for a walk, even in the winter. Toshami?
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight.
Thank you for coming and joining us, and thank you for, welcome to Bloomington, welcome to the city of Bloomington, as you live in the city of Bloomington, but welcome to the city, capital C of Bloomington. We're glad to have you here and very glad to have you on your finance team. Welcome.
Thank you. I enjoyed very much.
And then we have Matt Osmanson. And Matt joined finance in September as a customer service, customer billing specialist for our commercial accounts. He grew up in Adams, Minnesota, and after completing his undergraduate degree, he began working as a bookkeeper in his father's business while completing his master's degree at Mankato. When his dad decided to retire, Matt moved to metro area and began working for Gopher State One. And then after that, he worked for Curry Insurance. And he is a former resident of Bloomington, and he now lives in Hopkins. And in his free time, he enjoys golf, riding his bicycle, and going to concerts. He is also an active volunteer donating blood and platelets, helping out during concerts and events at the Cedar Culture Center, and working to serve meals for loaves and fishes in Central Lutheran Church. Welcome, Matt.
Welcome, Matt.
Thank you.
Glad to have you. I can honestly say I've been to a lot of Minnesota cities. I don't think I've been to Adams. Where is Adams, Minnesota? And how big is it?
Adams is a town of 800. It's near Rochester, Austin, that area, southeast Minnesota.
Very good. Well, welcome. Glad to have you onboard. Welcome to our finance department. Thank you. Thank you much. Next on my list, Mr. Verbrugge.
Rather than coming down, I'm just going to invite Kaitlin to go up to the podium. And as Kaitlin goes up there, Kaitlin Danielsak is our new administrative intern in the city manager's office, comes to us most recently from the League of Minnesota Cities, where she had a stint as well. And we are really looking forward to her being with us for the next year. So Kaitlin, I'll invite you to share more about your personal journey that brought you here.
Thank you. Yeah, as Jamie said, I'll echo that. I've been involved in local government and internships, and undergrad in both of my graduate degree now. And so I'm really happy to be in Bloomington and everything that the city stands for, and specifically working with the five-year strategic plan. So.
Well, welcome aboard. We're very glad to have you. Where are you working on your masters?
The U of M, at Bountiful School.
Oh, very good. Good, good. Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And our final bit of introductions this evening, Diane Kirby has a number of folks, new folks in public health.
Good evening, Mayor and city council. It is my pleasure to welcome five new members of our public health division. And we'll start with Alicia Ugarte Del Rio. As our new community health services manager in public health, Alicia oversees the family health, WIC, disease prevention and control, and community resource teams. Alicia brings eight years of local public health experience from the front lines and organizational leadership levels. She holds a doctor of nursing practice degree from St. Catherine University and a master of science in nursing education from Bethel University. A Bloomington resident, Alicia has come full circle in her career. She fell in love with the public health area when she was placed with the city of Bloomington as a baccalaureate nursing student for her community clinical. And she says she is honored to return to the city of Bloomington nine years later as a public health leader. Please welcome Alicia.
Thank you so much. I'm just so honored and excited to be here as a Bloomington resident. And this is the place, like I said, where I fell in love with public health. So I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Glad to have you. Thanks.
Tisha Bradshaw started last month in the newly created position of public health supervisor for substance abuse prevention, well-being, and policy. With nine years of dedicated advocacy in affordable housing, Tisha brings a wealth of experience and passion to her work. Her expertise spans affordable housing advocacy, small business ownership consulting, and a deeply personal understanding of the challenges faced by loved ones dealing with opioid addiction and trauma. Tisha is not only a dedicated mother, but a committed community builder and an advocate for equity through holistic, trauma-informed care. Tisha's multifaceted background and lived experiences has uniquely positioned her as a compassionate and effective advocate and leader. Please welcome Tisha.
Welcome, Tisha.
Thank you for having me. I'm excited to be here. Thank you.
We're excited to have you onboard. Welcome.
Jennifer Schreifels is the disease prevention and control supervisor in the public health division. She oversees a team of public health nurses who provide direct services to community members. Jen has worked in local public health for more than 10 years, primarily focused on infectious disease prevention and control and employee health and safety. Jen holds a master of nursing degree from the University of Minnesota, and she is currently working on a master of public health in occupational and environmental health nursing, also at the U of M. Please welcome Jen.
Thank you so much for having me.
Welcome, Jen.
Thank you.
Natalie. Natalie Gomez is a WIC peer breastfeeding counselor in public health. As a mom of three, she is happy to share her experiences with others. Natalie was a teen mom and went back to get her high school diploma after pregnancy, but was not able to continue her education. Now, she is looking forward to helping other moms on the same journey, know all about the great opportunities in store for them while still caring for their babies. Natalie lives in Bloomington and is excited to help guide all the moms that she's working with, with as much knowledge as possible, something she says she wished she could have had during her pregnancy. Please welcome Natalie Gomez.
Thank you. I'm so excited to be here and just join everybody. Thank you.
Great to have you onboard. Welcome.
And finally, we have another Bloomington resident, Daisy Molina. Daisy is also a peer, WIC peer breastfeeding counselor. She's a mom to a 16-month-old, and she is expecting her second baby in September. Before her pregnancy, Daisy enrolled in a community college to pursue nursing, and she was only able to attend one semester before giving birth to her first child. As a teen mom, Daisy was grateful for the help and support she received from WIC and her family members during her motherhood journey. Daisy, again, lives in Bloomington. She's happy to help other moms as best she can with her own personal experience. Please welcome Daisy Molina.
Hi. Thank you for having me.
Welcome, Daisy.
Thank you.
Great to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. And welcome to everybody. I'm so impressed. I don't know if you are, council, with the experience and the qualifications and the talent these, all the folks that we heard from bring to the Bloomington City staff. And it says a lot, I think, about them, certainly, but their willingness to serve the city of Bloomington and the residents of Bloomington. So welcome to all of you. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Thank you for representing Bloomington. In a lot of ways, you're the face of Bloomington now. Whether you like it or not, you're going to, people are going to see you and think Bloomington. So thank you. Thanks for being here tonight. And welcome aboard. Item 2.2 on our agenda is a swearing in of our Growth Through Opportunity Program participants. And Deputy Chief Bitney is going to kick this off for us. Good evening, DC. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm actually going to have one of our officers, Officer Dez Daniels, kind of come up, give a little bit of background on this program, because this is one of his ideas within the police department to kind of bring this thing forward. So.
I kind of figured if there was a microphone and Dez was here, we were going to, we were going to hear from, we were going to hear from Dez.
So I didn't know I'd be talking at all today, but Growth Through Opportunity, we connected with Empower Inclusion. I actually went to a training and heard Alex and Paul talk at the training in their Empower Inclusion. And what it is, is it's a program where Gage and Johnny are going to intern through the city. They're going to be able to go around from the police department to environmental health, the fire department, communications. The Mall of America is partnering with us. And it's an 11-week or 10-week program where they're going to be interning on Mondays and Wednesdays. Or tomorrow, they get to go to Cops and Cones with the police department. So, and they're just going to get job opportunity and learn new things, build their resumes, and you never know what happens after that.
Sounds like a fantastic program.
And so mayor, city council, city manager, as part of that, anybody that comes to the police department, we're going to have them take an oath. And so they're going to, we're going to ask both of them to step up and take this oath for us. So please, gentlemen, step up here, please.
Are they coming up here?
Well, I want to make sure they get a chance to get pictures. I'm guessing pictures.
Actually, if you're taking pictures, do not be shy. We're never shy during swearing in. So come on up. If you want to come right in front of us here, you can come wherever you need to get, to get a good picture. Please don't be shy.
You guys, you guys can face this way. So then you guys can take the pictures. That work?
That'll work.
All right. I'll wait till you get set. You know what to do. Ready? All right, gentlemen, raise a hand, please, for me, okay? And just repeat after me. I, Johnny Jensen.
I, I'm Johnny Jensen.
I, Gage Perryman.
I, Gage Perryman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Do support.
See, the Constitution of the United States.
Do Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
Do state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge.
To faithfully discharge.
The duties.
The duties.
As a growth.
As a growth.
Through opportunity.
Through opportunity.
Intern for the city of Bloomington.
Intern the city of Bloomington.
Minnesota to the best.
Minnesota to the best.
Of my judgment and ability.
Of judgment and my ability.
Great. Welcome.
Yeah, you should get in there, too.
So now, Gage and Johnny, the tradition is, after you're sworn in, you have to come and be greeted by all the council members. So if you want to come over here and say hello. Welcome aboard, Johnny.
Nice to meet you, man. For the first time.
Yeah, it's good to see you. Congratulations. Very nice to meet you as well. Well, congratulations, Gage and Johnny, and thank you, Officer Dez, for being the thought process behind this. I think it's a great program and looking forward to seeing our continued participation here in the city of Bloomington. Well done. Thank you. Council item 2.3 on our agenda is a proclamation for Pride Month. So I'm going to head down to the podium and offer our proclamation. So the way we do our proclamations, we usually have people here ready to accept them. And we ask you to come in, come in behind us. Where did council member De La Sondra wanted to be part of this as well? Glad you're here tonight. This is our. Proclamation for Pride Month, June 1 through June 30, 2024. Whereas the month of June 2024 is designated as Pride Month and recognizes the discrimination and violence individuals who identify as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, LGBTQIA+, are subjected to, and raises up and promotes self-affirmation, dignity, equal rights, and increases the visibility of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas the city of Bloomington is committed to being inclusive, equitable, and welcoming of all individuals along the natural spectrum of human identity and sexual orientation, and recognizes that we are a diverse community, enriched by this diversity, including the contributions the LGBTQIA+ community has made and continues to make. And whereas the LGBTQI+ rights movement continues to this day, and while there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQI+ community in the United States and around the world still face an unacceptable level of discrimination and violence. So we must remain vigilant and push back against those who seek to roll back our progress. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Tim Bussi, mayor of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim June 2024 as Pride Month, and call upon the people of Bloomington to turn back discrimination and prejudice everywhere it exists, and commemorate the courageous individuals who have fought and continue to fight for the rights of LGBTQIA+ people dated this third day of June 2024. This is, I'm always so glad when we can designate Pride Month and always look forward to our Pride Celebration, which I think is coming up later this summer, because it's just, as a celebration to include everyone, to make sure that it's available and welcoming to everyone, is just something that we don't see often enough in terms of our city celebrations. I think some people kind of parse them out and say, this is not for me, or this is not for others. Our celebrations are indeed for everyone. And I think the Pride Celebration, we see that every year. I think Pride Month shows that very clearly every year, and cannot wait for the celebration once again this year. And to have everyone up here, now what I generally do is turn over the microphone. Whoever would like it, I know.
Thank you, Mayor Bucy, city council members, and the Bloomington residents. I am Gina Dobagovic, the president of the new Bloomington, Minnesota Board of Directors, and I am joined by our other directors. On behalf of our dedicated volunteer team, I am honored to accept this proclamation recognizing June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. This declaration is a powerful affirmation of our city's commitment to inclusivity, diversity, and equality. Bloomington is a city enriched by its diversity. Our strength lies in our ability to embrace and celebrate the unique contributions of our residents. The LGBTQIA+ community has played an integral role in shaping our city's cultural and social fabric. From activists and artists to educators and entrepreneurs, their contributions contribute to make Bloomington a vibrant and dynamic place to live. However, as the proclamation rightly points out, the fight for LGBTQIA+ rights is far from over. Despite remarkable progress, discrimination and violence persist, both here in the United States and around the world. It is our collective responsibility to remain vigilant and to stand against any efforts to roll back the gains we have made. We must continue to advocate for equality and justice, ensuring that everyone, regardless of their identity or orientation, can live openly and authentically without fear. So this month, we come together to celebrate. Let us also remember those who came before us and fought tirelessly for the rights and freedoms that we enjoy today. Let us honor their legacy by continuing their work and striving to create a future where love, respect, and acceptance prevail. In closing, I want to thank Mayor Bucy, the city council members, and the Bloomington residents, and invite everyone to our annual Bloomington Pride event, which will take place later this year outside of Civic Plaza. Thank you.
Oh, my point of personal privilege. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I love all the folks here. I, you know, I like to say, when you look up the word pride in the dictionary, or you look up the word shame in the dictionary, you will find those antonyms of each other. And so when we talk about why we call it pride, it's because what people want to do to queer communities is shame us into going back into our closets where we don't make you uncomfortable. I will never do that. I am supportive of all these folks who don't want to do that. And I really, really just want to encourage you this month and every day, frankly, but this month especially, to look deep, deep in your heart and figure out, if it's a struggle for you, how you can talk to me as your city council member, or talk to someone else who has been willing to put themselves out there in our community as a member of this queer family, and to say, what do I, what can I be doing to make this place easier for everyone to feel love, acceptance, and respect? And my door is always open for that. I hope you'll take advantage of it if it's a question for you. And if you're already with us, thank you, thank you, and God bless you for that. Thank you.
Council, next up on our agenda is our consent business. And councilmember Loman, as our consent business this evening, councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any final holds? Seeing none, I'll just hold 3.1 and then move 3.2 through 3.22.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Loman, second by councilmember Carter, to accept tonight's consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Loman, item 3.1.
Mayor, the first item here, or the only item on the agenda here for consent, is the resolution to accept donations. And we had four different donations. And I wanted to just acknowledge each of those four donations that were given to the city. We had, from the Mall of America, we had 90 lunch boxes for our police week. And then we had donation of small equipment from the Church of the Nativity of Mary. And then we also had, from Legion Post 550 to the city of Bloomington, two donations with respect to concessions, refrigerator, two of those. And then finally, we had money coming from Normandale Community College for our Juneteenth celebration in the amount of $1,000. And we would like to thank all four of those folks and the people that represent those areas, and for all the things that they have been able to give to the city. And I know that our city will always send thank you notes and appreciation. And that's all, Mayor. I'll go ahead and move that we move to accept the donations.
Motion by councilmember Loman, second by councilmember Moe. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Muah to accept item 3.1 on our consent business donations. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Councilmember Lohman, for handling the consent agenda tonight. We'll move on to item four on our agenda, our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. And item 4.1 on our agenda is a public hearing. This for the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lot three and four, block one, SIC, Hannipin County, Minnesota. Julie Long, City Engineer, is here to fill this in. Good evening.
Mr. Mayor, Counsel, this one is fairly straightforward in advance of the construction that is going on for SIC. We're looking to vacate the existing drainage and utility easements so that they can be replatted in the future.
Counsel, any questions of Ms. Long on this one? And I can attest, the construction is underway at SIC, so they are underway. No questions of Ms. Long? Very good. This is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing now. This is a public hearing on item 4.1 regarding the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lots three and four, block one, SIC. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Anyone? Do we have anyone on the line? Last call for anybody in the council chambers? Counsel, we have no one on the phone. We have no one coming forward in the council chambers. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muah, closing the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0, closing the public hearing. Counsel, any questions or thoughts on this? If not, I would look for action on this one.
Happy to move that, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Delisandro.
It looks like we have two motions. So the first one, oh no, that was the public hearing. Sorry, my bad. I move to adopt ordinance approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements over and across lots three and four, block one, SIC, Hannipin County, Minnesota.
Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Muah to adopt the ordinance. There it is, I lost my place. To adopt the ordinance as approved, approving the vacation of public drainage and utility easements. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Move on to item 4.2 on our agenda. This is our second public hearing of the evening. This regarding Hunt Electric at 7900 Chicago Avenue. This is the preliminary and final platting variance. And we have Dakota, is it Crowell or Crowell?
It is Crowell.
Crowell, I missed twice. I'm sorry about that.
That's all good.
Mr. Crowell, welcome. I think this is your first time in front of us, is it not?
It is, yes. So, good evening, Mayor, and council members. My name is Dakota Crowell. I'm a planner in the Community Development Department, and just want to give some quick highlights to the item related to Hunt Electric. So it's a planning case 2024-39 related to the Hunt Electric site at 7900 Chicago Ave, so just north of Smith Park there, and then on the other side of American Boulevard from Walmart, and some of the other businesses and hotels. So this is the existing conditions of the site. You can see there's a loading area on the southern portion of the site that's currently gravel that doesn't currently meet our code requirements, and so Hunt Electric is trying to bring their site into full compliance. And so with that, they're going to be converting that gravel area into asphalt, as well as some landscaping and screening improvements on their site. And so with the size and kind of change from gravel to asphalt, it also does require stormwater facilities, and so they have been working with Excel Energy on the adjacent utility corridor to purchase part of that corridor to provide those stormwater facilities in an outlot. And so there's kind of three related applications here. You'll see kind of three recommendations and three motions for a final site and building plan, a type-two preliminary and final plat, and then a plating variance. So this is their proposed site plan. Again, just showing the loading area that would, that's currently gravel, that would become asphalt. I don't have a slide here, but it was in the kind of staff report. They also have a landscape plan. They're going to be providing a number of trees and shrubs along Chicago Ave. This just shows the proposed location of the stormwater facilities as well. And then kind of on the platting, plating variance side, so the type-two plat would combine the two lots for Hunt Electric, so it would remove the existing property line that runs through the building to help clean up some entitlements. And then in addition, it would also create an outlot, again, for the stormwater facilities. So kind of on the image here on the right, kind of that magenta pink box is the kind of designated outlot area. And then the plating variance, all that comes into play. I know it's not all too common that we see plating variances, but upon approval, it would allow the applicant to only survey and plat a portion of an existing parcel, so that kind of blue line outlines that existing size of the parcel. It's part of a utility corridor that kind of runs the entire length of the city, and so just allow them to kind of plat and survey that portion. I'll just note that a plating variance does have an unusual hardship test that it has to meet, and in the staff report, staff found kind of the unusual hardship here to be able to designate just a portion of a relatively large parcel for stormwater facilities felt kind of reasonable. It's kind of otherwise undevelopable land because of the overhead transmission lines, so to be able to use that for stormwater seemed kind of like a reasonable and creative way to use some of that adjacent land. One condition I'll just highlight in the staff report is there is an existing sidewalk in the utility corridor, and then in the city's park systems master plan, as well as the active transportation action plan, we do call out, hopefully to see a future kind of multi-use path along the entire utility corridor. So we did condition the plat to have a trail easement that we could use in the future there, so we don't somehow create a gap potentially in that outlot to not be able to put a trail through that outlot area. So with that, staff and then as well as the planning commission did recommend approval of all three applications, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Crowell? Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember Delisandro. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. One quick question. Is the city paying for the repair to that sidewalk? And if so, why?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that is one of the other conditions that we put on the plan. It would be the responsibility of the applicant and the contractor to repay, to repair any impacts to the existing city trail. So yeah, we did flag that note on the plans and added the condition that it isn't the city's responsibility to do that, it's the applicant's.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Related to that trail question, or the sidewalk, I'm assuming there's some elevation concerns there if this is going to be a kind of a, you know, a drainage area. We wouldn't want that to get completely overwhelmed during, you know, those peak periods of time. Do you know if we've also conditioned it to be elevated or to some degree made so that it wouldn't necessarily get swamped?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, there isn't a specific condition on there around the elevation. I'm not aware of, I guess some of the more kind of technical engineering questions are kind of not necessarily my wheelhouse. I don't know if any other engineering staff have any comments, but we didn't, we don't have any specific conditions related to that.
It was just something that I thought about is that, you know, it's great that you called it out, I'm really happy that you did that, and then the question would be like, is it going to be usable, or is there like three months out of the year where we have problems because of what's happening here? Thank you. That's okay. Second question I had was, and I think that Commissioner, one of the commissioners on the planning committee asked, the planning commission asked a similar question. We are losing a decent amount of pervious surface, and we're replacing a majority of it with impervious surface, hence the reason we're doing this. We may not, I do not believe that we have a condition for, or we don't have any guidelines and/or requirements as it relates to permeable surfaces as, for parking lots and things like that. And I would just like maybe point out to the council that that might be in our best interest going forward as we think about this. So note to council on that, but I'm curious, with that recommendation or the questions asked by planning commission, was there any conversation between the applicant and you all on staff about whether or not they could accommodate anything more permeable?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, after the commission meeting, I didn't have any follow-up conversations with the applicant on kind of exploring pavers or other kinds of impervious surface materials. I imagine probably because of this being more of a loading area with heavier equipment, that's probably why they defaulted more to asphalt or something there. But certainly something, yeah, we can think about kind of moving forward.
No, that's great. Hi, Ms. Long, how are you?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Delisandro, hopefully you don't mind me coming up here. The Class 5 gravel parking lot is considered an impervious surface. If you've ever driven on one during a rainstorm, you notice that if it's designed well, the water's not going anywhere, so that is why you're not seeing a whole lot of increase in impervious surface, but they are building a filtration basin as well.
Oh, okay. And so what happened, just out of curiosity, what happens if that is true and it's fairly impervious now? Where's the water going at the moment?
Some of it runs off, and as some of you have pointed out, it does kind of flood into that sidewalk area. There's a depression area, so if you walk it in like the March timeframe when snow is melting and refreezing, you will definitely notice that. You don't notice it a lot of the time in the year unless where it's been particularly wet. So I haven't walked it recently, but you may have noticed that we've had a wetter-than-average April and May, so it may be wet now, but it should not be impassable. It would just be, your feet are going to get a little wet, and you might have to change socks.
Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for informing us on that, Councilmember, or excuse me, Ms. Long, I appreciate that. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I was actually around the area, so I drove through just to look at it. It is not currently flooded right now. But my question is, I was surprised to see how close it was to Smith Park Pond, so just wondering if there's any particular concern with the pervious surface causing issues if we did have a major storm event that would potentially flood the area south of that?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Muah, we did have some staff in Public Works kind of share that question that you had, but I think, given the current Class 5 would be considered impervious and there's not any kind of stormwater facility there right now, the addition of this new infiltration basin in stormwater facilities would be an improvement to that to ensure that it's not causing any issues into Smith Park.
Counsel, any additional questions here? All right, very good. Thank you. This is item 4.2, and this is a public hearing. This regarding the Hunt Electric at 7900 Chicago Avenue, preliminary and final platting variance. Is there anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Good evening and welcome. If you could identify yourself for the record.
I'm Catherine Babcock. My questions about this would be, with such a close location to a wetland area with migrating birds, what is being done about lighting, downlighting? What is being done about keeping lights off during migratory periods? If they're going to expand this area up to the fence and light along the fence, make sure that the lighting doesn't filter into or go beyond their property line so that you have still an inland area that is amenable to a habitat space? And then also, if they could offset more of that lost area for permeability with some more trees, something would, along the backside into the power lines maybe, if that's possible to build more out, just to absorb more of the carbon that comes into that environment? Every little bit helps, and that's what I'm saying, is while you're here and you have the opportunity to make careful and close decisions about the environment, that you'd make note that these are the little ways in which we can really make Bloomington flourish. That's a lot of space to lose, to, I mean, even though it's still impermeable. But take advantage, you could do green roofing, you could do, I know they're doing the trees along the Smith Avenue or along the Chicago corridor there, but I would be very happy if you guys would just take a look at making sure it's environmentally friendly for that little pond area, because it's not devoid of birds or people. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on item 4.2 this evening? Caitlin, do we have anyone on the line? Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, no one else coming forward in the council chambers? No one on the phone? Look for a motion to close item 4.2, the public hearing on item 4.2 this evening. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Rivas to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So, Mr. Crowell, the question regarding lighting issues or the possibility of additional vegetation and so on, has that been discussed? Is that part of any requirements for our friends at Hunt Electric?
Yeah, Mayor, council members, we do look at lighting as part of the review. In this case, they're just utilizing the existing lighting on the building and not proposing any additional new lighting. When this site plan was approved a number of years ago, it also included a proof of lighting plan, so if they wanted to kind of provide additional overhead lights or whatever it would be in that loading area, there is kind of already a approved plan with that proof of lighting.
Very good. So there's no additional lighting planned with this, and the lighting that they have are within the mandates of what they are required to have there?
That is correct.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Delisandro. No question? Any comments then? Comments on this? Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to take a moment, since we have relevant topics on this and upcoming agenda items, to just suggest that we as a council probably need to provide a little bit of guidance as it relates to some of these environmental concerns to planning, because they can only enforce and put out there what we have told them we would like to see. And so I believe, I've mentioned this before, I believe that we all care about this, but if we are, if we do want to move that forward, I'd like us to continue to think a little bit about how some of these incremental changes, as they've been called even, can help us with some of our environmental or sustainability goals as we, you know, make some modifications to the planning ordinances and things like that. So with that comment, nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you for the comment. Appreciate it. Counsel, any additional comments? If not, Counsel, we have three motions. I would look for action on item 4.2 this evening. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to adopt a resolution approving a plating variance to only plat and survey a portion of a parcel for Outlet A.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to adopt a resolution approving a plating variance only, to only plat and survey a portion of a parcel for Outlet A. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Muah.
I'd move to approve final site and building plans for a parking lot expansion and other site improvements, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to approve the final site and building plans for parking lot expansion and other site improvements, subject, of course, to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Muah.
I'd move to approve the preliminary plat and adopt a resolution approving the final plat for Hunt Electric addition, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Muah, second by Councilmember Lohman, to approve the preliminary plat and adopt the final plat for Hunt Electric addition. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you very much, and welcome aboard. Glad to have you here and appreciate it. Thanks for the conversation on this one, Counsel. We will move on to item 4.3 on our agenda. Item 4.3 is the resolution related to the environmental assessment worksheet petition for Kennedy High School Stadium. Mr. Centenario is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Do have a presentation, presentations ready for you when that is available.
Very good.
Great, thank you. So...
And if I could ask you to be mindful of the microphone as you speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, so we have a unique, fairly unique agenda item here, and we will go into some detail on what this action we're seeking from you is and what it is not, but it revolves around a petition to the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board that an environmental assessment worksheet be prepared for. an environmental assessment worksheet be prepared for high school stadium improvements. Maybe this'll work. Okay, great. So just to answer the question, what are we asking you to do? And simply put, we are asking you to determine if the Kennedy High School football stadium project has the potential to significantly impact the environment and therefore require an environmental assessment worksheet or an EAW. What we are not asking you to do tonight is to approve or deny the projects themselves. That is, depending on what you do tonight, that could be before the Planning Commission, there's a public hearing planned for the Planning Commission this Thursday, and they'll have the opportunity to approve or deny the stadium projects. In this case, Planning Commission does have the approval authority of the site plan and these improvements, however, that is subject to an appeal. And so if the Planning Commission approves and it is appealed, then it would come back to you for a final decision.
All right. I'm Kevin Toski, I'm an Assistant City Attorney, I work with planning, so mayor and members. I'm here to talk about, just kind of ground us in what the law requires as far as an EAW. So what are we talking about? The Minnesota Environmental Policy Act. So it was adopted in 1973, kind of modeled after the National Environmental Policy Act. So there's two sources of law we look at, the statutes, so Chapter 116D, and then the rules, the Minnesota Administrative Rules, Chapter 4410. The rules require, there's two main documents, environmental assessment worksheet, which is what we're here talking about tonight. It's a brief document that lays out facts, it's used to determine the need for an environmental impact statement, which was a, is a longer, more analytical document that discusses the environmental impacts in more detail. So the EAW is used to kind of determine the need for an EIS or to scope out what the EIS should address. There's also the area-wide alternative review, which we have in the South Loop as well, I should mention that. The two projects we're talking about tonight are outside of that area, so we will not be using that review. All right. Whoops. There we go. So, and the rules provide that an EAW is mandatory in certain cases, those are listed in the rules. So for sports or entertainment facilities, an EAW is required if it's gonna have a peak attendance of 5,000 or more people. Individually, these projects don't hit that mark, but together they might, we'll talk about that in a little bit. The other way it can come before you for a decision is by a petition. So any person can file, must be signed by at least 100 people that own property in Minnesota. They submitted that to the Environmental Quality Board in Minnesota, who then verifies that everything is accurate in the petition, so we don't deal with that aspect. They've already done that. So they sent it to us on May 7th, and then we got it two days before the Planning Commission was scheduled to hear it on May 9th. All right. So the key question you're asked today to determine is, does this project have the potential for significant environmental effects? So that's kind of the baseline we're looking at, that's the finding that you would need to make to order an EAW. So there's four factors that the rules require you to look at during that, and that's, number one is the type and extent and reversibility of the environmental effects. Two is the cumulative potential effects, and I'll come back to that in a second. Three is the extent to which the environmental effects are subject to mitigation by ongoing public authorities, so that could be the city, the MPCA, or others. And four is the extent to which other, to which environmental effects can be anticipated and controlled as a result of other available environmental studies. So, and I hate putting this much text on here, but I thought it was worth having it all in one slide for you all to look at, but I get, I understand it's a lot of text. Going back to the cumulative potential effects, there's four little sub items you need to address in there. One, whether the cumulative potential effect is significant. Two, whether the contribution is significant when viewed in connection with other contributions to the cumulative potential effect. And you can consider other past projects in the environmentally relevant area or other development projects that are reasonably certain to occur in that area. Three, the degree to which the project complies with mitigation measures. And then four, the efforts of proposer to minimize contribution. So Mr. Centenario will go over the environmental effects, mitigation efforts by the proposer, ongoing authority by us and other public agencies to regulate. Those are just the findings that you have to consider in the analysis. Turning to one of the arguments, and I thought it would be worth some legal background on what a connected or a phased action is, because this is one of the arguments that the petitioners are making. So the rules provide that if two projects are quote "connected actions" or "phased action," they are considered together for an EAW determination, so you have to consider them as a single project. That's important because taken together, each stadium has 2,500 people, together it would be 5,000, so that triggers a mandatory EAW. So that's one of the arguments they're making. The rules provide what the definition of those two terms are. So a connected action is if one project would directly induce the other, or one project is a prerequisite to the other and the other is not justified in itself. Or, three, the neither project is justified in itself. So note the ors, either, any of those can be true. For a phased action, two or more projects to be undertaken by the same proposer, that's true here, will have environmental effects in the same geographic area, probably difference of opinion there. And then, three, are substantially certain to be undertaken sequentially over a limited period of time. So that is met by the school district's plan to kind of do these at the same time or in short order succession. That is all I have for the, for the legal to kind of ground us in what we're doing, what we have to look at tonight. So Mr. Centenario, we'll go over the individual environmental effects now.
Thank you for the legal background. Question, Councilmember De La Sondra?
Yes, if I can ask a quick clarifying question, thank you. Would you mind going back two slides very quickly?
Sure, yeah.
Just something I'm not quite connected for. One more there, okay. So, related to the I petition, so by petition, is that by petition to us, by petition to like the Environmental Quality Board, is it all of the above? What's the, what's the requirement there?
Mayor, Councilmember De La Sondra, the petition goes to the Environmental Quality Board first, and then they determine who the responsible government unit is, they make that determination, they determined it was the city of Bloomington, and then they send it to us.
And that's how it came to us?
Yeah, they verify that all the signatures are true and correct, so that takes us out of that equation to do that.
Understood. Can you mind, one more, I'm sorry, next slide really quick. I appreciate this, thank you. Okay, so the, the, note that, if you can provide me the difference between the cumulative potential is significant and significant when viewed in connection. So that sounds like one is straight up significant, the other one is straight up in, like significant in context?
Yeah, correct, so.
How do they play against each other?
Mayor and Councilmember De La Sondra, yeah, I think you're supposed to look at them, you know, one factor is by itself, and then you can consider past actions in the environmentally relevant area or future development that's likely to occur. So what the rules say is that there has to be like development plans or something relatively specific. You'll note in the Kennedy one, we talked about the Lyndale retrofit and potential redevelopment there. So, yeah, they want you to separately analyze them, but take into account future and past projects in that area, so.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Nelson, question?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, just a quick process question. Before we jump into reviewing all of the potential impacts, does it make any sense to just address the mandatory? Because if it's mandatory, there really isn't anything else to talk about.
I'm not exactly clear what you're asking here.
I'm just asking if we should just right now address whether or not it's mandatory or not.
Oh.
Because if it's mandatory, we don't need to make a determination of anything else because it's mandatory.
That is correct, I will look to... Kevin, please.
Mayor and members, I think that's correct, if you make a determination that they're a connected or phased project, then you won't have to consider anything else, the cumulative impact or potential effects. It would just mean that it would hit the 5,000 mark, so Mike will be able to talk about the reasons why the city is not supporting that argument, but, yeah.
Ms. Mandashine?
Mayor members, if I might add, thank you, Kevin, for that introductory item. I think it's also important though to note that the council needs to make findings based on whichever direction it goes, and so the staff recommendation that's in the packet does that process very, in a very detailed way, as the staff recommendation. So there may be benefit in having the full presentation so that you could have a fuller discussion.
Okay. Very good, very good. But I will thank you, Councilmember Nelson, for bringing up process, because I should have mentioned this as we started. What I would like to do from a process standpoint is get through the staff presentation here and ask questions as necessary. Then I know we have petitions, our petitioners are here, and give them an opportunity, say up to about 10 minutes, to present their side of the story here, and then hear from our friends at the school district and get the full, get the full breadth of the information that we have available. So, again, I apologize, should have mentioned that ahead of time, it just kind of slipped my mind, but I wanted to give both folks a heads up as to what our process is gonna be as we're gonna keep moving forward here, so. So thank you for reminding me. Mr. Centenario.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. So as Mr. Toski introduced, our recommendation to you is to find that there is not the potential for significant environmental impact. And we also are of the opinion that this is not a mandatory project. You know, if you look at where the high schools are located geographically, as a bird flies, they're three miles apart. They do have the same property owner, of course, so that is a similarity. But there is no phasing for these projects, unlike Mall of America or Bloomington Central Station where there are phases of development and they happen in a sequential manner. That is not the case with the high school stadium. There's also a lot of land use or land uses that are in between these two sites. They're, you know, 35W bisects the areas of Bloomington. These are located in different neighborhoods, of course, served by different arterial and collector streets. They're even in different watershed districts, so that is a very important environmental factor. You know, what the water quality and stormwater management requirements are different by, somewhat by watershed district. The Kennedy High Schools in Nymal Creek Watershed District, Jefferson High Schools in Lower Minnesota Watershed District. So we don't believe that this, this project meets the mandatory EAW or connected and phased decision. So I'll touch on the existing conditions. So we are reviewing the Kennedy High School campus, and not a whole much, let me rephrase that, there are certainly site improvements that the applicant is seeking, and we'll identify exactly what those are. But by and large, if you look at the campus, there wouldn't be, wouldn't be that many changes. But of course, not too far from where we are tonight, Kennedy is located on the northeast corner of East El Chocaby Road in Nicolet. The stadium, which I've circled here, it's important to note that it's an existing stadium, there is an existing track, track and field improvements, and the artificial turf or the field itself is already existing. And so what the applicant is proposing to do, I believe they want to replace the field, but it's going from artificial turf to artificial turf. So there are some sidewalk improvements that are necessary for accessibility and pedestrian access, and we'll touch on that in a moment. And so this is from the applicant team in terms of, and this is the campus plan with the improvements. And you can see the school, the parking areas, and then the stadium itself. And so the main improvement is the bleachers on the west side of the football field, and I have some other images of that. The parking area to the northwest of the stadium would shrink a little bit to accommodate drop-off areas and those pedestrian movements that we talked about. And I'll also touch on a proof of parking plan that's on the north side of the site in order to meet certain city code requirements. So in terms of physical improvements that's being proposed by the school district, this is really the, the main, the main element, is bleachers to support folks that want to watch activities, or football would certainly be one, but then there'd also be track and field, soccer, and I believe lacrosse that would use the space. So in terms of seating, again, you heard that the occupancy would be about 2,500 spectators, that's what you, that's what you see here. This is a bleacher system that would, that would meet that. The height of this bleacher system is also relevant, if you can see that the image on the lower part of the screen, it's about 30 and a half feet. We do have code requirements for building height, and that code requirement here is 40 feet, so it's, it's below building height allowances in the city. So, of course, you had a lot of feedback related to parking, and that's of course something that we review, something we look at. It's, it's always a balance, we want to ensure that there is enough parking so there aren't significant challenges, but, you know, talking about environmental impact, we don't want there to be acres and acres of parking that is, that is empty the vast majority of the time. We do believe that that has an environmental impact in itself. But at the Kennedy High School campus, there are 652 surface stalls in these various areas, and the code requirement, because we calculated at one-third of the occupancy is 833. So we had to figure out a way, if, if that is truly needed, where could the school district build more parking? And the solution there is to design a proof of parking lot. Just one moment. Well, I'll get to that in a moment, sorry. Closer image of the stadium again. But I want, also want to touch on like just side by side, existing versus proposed. On the left is existing, you see the football field, there are some bleachers there today, there's a field that's used for track, track activities. And then on the right, you see the, again, the football field is the same location, same configuration, but you have the bleachers there, along with some site improvements. Now this is the proof of parking I mentioned, so proof of parking is a way to meet code requirements but defer construction of parking, to ensure that it's actually necessary. And so we have a number of these proof of parking agreements throughout the city, and to date, we haven't, the city itself has not forced or compelled a property owner to build additional parking. It does happen, but it's usually the property owner that decides that they need more parking and then they build it on their own. But it also, you know, if we, if we find that it's not necessary, after, you know, observing home football games, for example, then it, it wouldn't be constructed. And so it's a way to identify and address code requirements, but also understand the reality that sometimes a code requirement does not equate to the true demand on the site. And then we can't include it in the parking supply, but there is some on-street parking that's available, certainly not along Nicolet or 98th Street, but, and there are some parking restrictions, but there is some on-street parking that could accommodate overflow. Now shifting in terms of environmental impact, shifting to noise, noise is certainly one of the primary concerns with the stadium project. There's amplified sound, there's a marching band, there's crowds, and so there's gonna be noise. And MPCA has very specific noise standards, and it is divided between daytime and nighttime. Naturally, the nighttime standard is more stringent, and so we needed to have a model or a plan that identified whether or not the anticipated noise would be compliant. And that's measured in L10 and L50, which is the sound level expressed in DBA, which has exceeded 10% of the time for a one-hour survey. So it is not a peak noise, it is a, a level that has exceeded 10% of the time. And similarly, L50 is a level that has exceeded 50% of the time. I won't go into any much detail, but here's just an image that it kind of identifies what that level is, and then you can see the peaks and valleys of, you know, of noise. So initially, the school district did not provide a sound study, they did some calculations, and they found that they, based on those calculations, there were some issues with code compliance. Ultimately, they did conduct a sound study with an acoustics firm, and they modeled the noise based on a variety of factors, based on studies that have been done, generally accepted methodologies. And they found that the anticipated noise would be code compliant. And you can see on the, the image is just the model itself, but then in the table one in the lower right, you can see Kennedy, the daytime anticipated is 58, and then the L50 is 51. So those are, those are levels that are, that are compliant with MPCA and the city requirements. Similarly, and this is just an image of the L50, the L50 model, again, code complying. So a lot of these standards that we talk about, whether it's noise, whether it's stormwater, is really trying to anticipate and address a lot of these environmental impacts that are possible. are possible. Lighting is another one. And, you know, there was a lot of comments on migratory birds, which we can certainly respect. At issue in one case was the design that was initially proposed. And so, naturally, if you're playing football or baseball, and you're playing at night, you know, you want to see a ball that's being thrown to you. And the solution or to improve the illumination of that is to have an uplit fixture, as you can see in that image on the left. Well, that's not permitted in the city of Bloomington, and so, we had the applicant remove it, and they have done so. So, there would not be this uplit fixture that's causing the glare and the light pollution that was of concern. So, in the upper right, you can see, that's really the system that was being proposed. You have the primary light fixtures at the top of the pole, and then the lower fixtures would be the uplight. That's not being proposed anymore. And similarly, when we talk about modeling, we also require modeling for lighting, and we use that, these are called photometric plans. And so, you can see these numbers on the field, those are measured in foot candles, and we don't have any maximum foot candle requirements for a field or a parking lot, but we do have maximum levels at property lines. And the most restrictive is at residential property lines. Again, this is along Third Avenue South, the more impacted area. And then, the applicant identified what that light trespass would be at the residential property line, 0.39. The maximum allowed is 0.5. So, that's something that we can measure in person with a light meter. We would do that, you know, prior to certificate of occupancy for the stadium to ensure that that lighting level is code complying. Also want to touch on conservation. You know, there is a lot of references to endangered species, and again, that's always something that we are aware of and respect and want to preserve. But we do not feel that there is the potential for significant environmental impact as it pertains to wildlife or people at this site. So, I identified Kennedy and Jefferson on this image, and this is a conservation corridor that's mapped, you know, more environmentally sensitive areas within the city of Bloomington. And as you can imagine, a lot of these areas are along Nine Mile Creek or the watershed of Nine Mile Creek, lakes, and the River Valley. These two sites, in Kennedy in particular, are not located in a conservation corridor. And lastly, I just want to touch on migratory birds. The Audubon Society has a mapping system that's interactive where it identifies important bird areas within the country, but you can zoom in and identify where these areas are relative to a particular geography. And so, this green, that's, you know, as you can guess, is along the River Valley, is an important bird area. The location of Kennedy High School is not within that important bird area. And lastly, one of the more challenging issues that we deal with is ground contamination. And as the petitioner rightly identified, is that Lindell Avenue is a superfund site or that corridor. And so, on this graphic, you see the potential source area for contamination or plume, and where that is in the city of Bloomington. Again, centered on Lindell Avenue between 98th and 90th. And so, this, of course, is an area of concern, and there has been development within this area that had to mitigate vapors that could be harmful to people. The way to mitigate it is more or less similar to a radon system, only on a larger scale for apartment buildings, which is what was done. So, given that Kennedy High School is not within the plume, staff reviewed stormwater management plans relative to the Lindell Corridor superfund site, and we do not have any concerns that the project impacts this contaminated area. So, with that, our recommendation to the city council is that you adopt a resolution determining that environmental assessment worksheet is not required for the Kennedy Stadium.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Council questions of either a Mr. Centenario or a Mr. Toski. Councilmember D'Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How are you? Thanks for being here. So, just want to kind of go through your four parts there and just get a quick answer from you if I can. Are you confident that if the MPCA were to review the noise study that we got today, that they would find it's from a reputable source and that they would agree with you? Do you feel pretty confident of that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I'm confident they would accept the findings from the firm. The firm, the name of the firm is Van Klaassen, they're a reputable acoustics firm. They've done a lot of work within the city of Bloomington, especially in the Southwood District where we have airport noise, and so, they're very familiar with the standards that apply. Whether or not the MPCA would agree, it's hard to say. I think we have these studies done by reputable professionals, and the firm that did this work is, I can't think of a firm that would do a better job. I think it was an appropriate level of work that they did.
Okay, great. Regarding lighting, the MPCA doesn't have a standard for that, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I'm not aware of MPCA having a lighting model or lighting requirement. The city of Bloomington is actually pretty progressive in terms of our own lighting standards, and we're one of the few communities that actually go out and inspect lighting.
Yeah.
We do that at night, of course, where we can have an accurate reading of what that light level is at a particular spot.
Yeah, okay. Regarding contamination, I would assume the Pollution Control Agency would have a point of view on contamination. I'm just curious if you also think that they agree with you, based on what your knowledge and any experience you've had working with them in the past regarding that?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, you know, I, of course, would defer to our friends in Public Works, but I trust their analysis, and they're finding that this is not a concern.
Okay. And of course, they don't necessarily participate in conservation, so you're leveraging the, who did you say that the conservation corridor comes from? It's from the DNR, correct?
Yeah, it was a collaboration, I think it was the DNR, but then that particular map was in a Nine Mile Creek Watershed Study that identified sensible or sensitive and high-quality habitats within the Watershed District.
And do you know when that study was conducted?
I'm sorry, I don't know the year. It was a more recent study.
Last 10 years or so?
Yeah, I believe so, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Just a couple of quick questions. With those four items that are there, and maybe this is not a question for you, maybe this is the Assistant's attorney, do we need to make all four findings or just would one be sufficient?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, which four findings?
You can probably go back to...
Yeah, if you don't mind going back to that.
Because we're having a laptop. Yeah. Sorry, just going through all these.
Wow, this was much further back than I thought. Wow. Went too far.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, you're asking about, oops, sorry.
Yeah, not that one.
There's a lag, there you go. Number two cumulative potential effects. You are to consider all those factors. I don't think they're couched in terms of making a finding or not, but those are the four factors you need to consider, address at least in the determination, and those are addressed in the findings.
Okay, so, look at all four of those, okay? And then, in terms of, since, you know, the applicant has changed how they're going to do the lighting, how might it handle that as I review these four findings?
Mayor, Councilmember Lohman, I can just address the fact that the final site and building plan approval that the planning commission will need to make, one of the findings they need to make is that it's code compliant. So, they'll have to make a determination that sound and lighting are both compliant, so.
Yeah, I would just add, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, that, you know, we identified compliance issue with the applicant, and they took that feedback, and then they adjusted their plans to be, to go within compliance. And so, in terms of any concerns about uplighting, those concerns are removed with the removal of those fixtures.
Okay, so that has been resolved. Okay, I just wanted to be sure that...
Yeah, and I would add, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, plans always tend to change a little bit between when a project is reviewed and when someone's looking for permits, and I just want to assure the council that we review, we do a thorough review before any permits are issued to ensure that it's still in compliance.
I think, I've got several, but I was going to ask just one last question. In terms of geographical area consideration, let's see if I can, I've got this written better here, how close would a project need to be in order to be considered to be connected?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, there is not a particular standard, but what I can do is compare it to other developments or other projects within the city of Bloomington that are phased or connected. So, if you envision Bloomington Central Station, for example, where you have a multiple-phase development over, you know, I don't know the acreage, but a fairly significant number of acres, and where development occurs over time, that is in one overall site or property or grouping of properties. I would consider that a similar geographic area.
So, a site, so a site or properties that were...
More of a site.
More of a site, okay.
What we're talking about between Kennedy and Jefferson is an area across the city. And so, you know, if you connect them geographically, I don't know necessarily where you stop the connection geographically. Is anything within the city of Bloomington geographically connected? And I would say that it's not. It really is more of a site-specific or phase-development-specific context.
And thank you for clarifying that. That's how the staff kind of looked at that, I appreciate that.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, and good evening. So, when you were looking at the determining whether it was connected or phased, and you were looking at the two different sites, did you also consider the third site, which is the Lincoln Stadium, which will no longer be in use? Because, you know, I could see somebody making an argument that net, it'll be 5,000, right? But then, we're also subtracting out the use of the Lincoln Stadium? Does that make sense? So, it's not really, I don't know.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, you know, we didn't really add the impact of removing Lincoln, per se. You know, it's an existing facility, you know, concerns about emissions or traffic that came up quite a bit. You know, it's important to note, these trips are already occurring. Home football games are, they're at Lincoln, so there are vehicles, there's busing, and so, the distribution of that changes, but the trips and the emissions, that's still existing. So, I guess I wouldn't characterize it as removing 5,000, I would just characterize it as relocating that traffic or impact.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, Council? Councilmember Revice.
Quick question for you. On regards to the cumulative effect, you mentioned that all the projects for refurbishing Lindell could affect the Kennedy Stadium. How so?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, I think that was to identify a way of looking at that. I don't believe that the Lindell Corridor or the Lindell Avenue retrofit, for example, and projects along the corridor are directly linked in terms of cumulative impact for the stadium. I think we just wanted to identify a certain way of thinking about cumulative impact.
Thank you.
Anything additional, Council? Thank you for the presentation, thank you for the information. As I mentioned, from a process standpoint, I would turn to our petition applicants and grant them the floor for a period of time here. I would, good evening, thanks for being here this evening. I would ask you just roughly 10 minutes or so to not exceed that.
Can we actually use their same slideshow?
It's kind of David against Goliath about the slideshow.
I think if, we could put the slides up, and if you wanted to reference their slides...
Well, here's the reason, we weren't told that we could speak tonight until this morning, so we have an unfair advantage.
Maybe just two should be talking about. So, my name's Doug Herzog, and thank you. I wish that there could have been some open communication between the school district and the city council and the planning commission with the community around there. It was on the agenda for the planning committee, and it never happened, right? So, some of the stuff that now is coming up to be emergent, he mentioned he didn't get the EAW worksheet until two days before, well, that's because we're kind of struggling to put it together as best we can. So, one thing about Bloomington, it's always been very inclusive, right? And it just doesn't feel like it's happening with this. We talk about whether this is a phased or a connected action. Both of these have always been brought up, the same agenda, everything is the same, the exact same time the mayor referred to them as, what did we say?
The site, both sites, both showing on noise.
Yeah, closely...
Both shown on the map.
We'll just... Yeah, so, closely, you know, closely related, they're all linked, right? And so, if we're just taking the best-case scenario of 2,500 spectators, that doesn't take into account the band, the football players, the coaches, you know, all the accessory people that are needed at a football game. So, that, between the two of them, puts us over the 5,000 mark right there. The other thing is, if it's leased out outside entities, where are you at then for number of people, right? That's going to put you at over 5,000, so that makes it a mandatory, you have to do the worksheet on it, because it gets you to over 5,000. Sorry, I'm not as polished as they are.
And did you say you wanted the slides up? Did you want to refer to the slides? Could we put the slides back up, please?
Why don't I talk, and then they can go to the slide?
That'll work.
Oh, sure, sure.
Mr. Mayor, could we have everybody identify themselves for the record, please?
Yes, my name is Doug Herzog, I've been a Bloomington resident for 58 years.
Lindsay Frey Palmquist.
Catherine Babcock.
You know, another thing we believe is that both schools, they have air quality permits that are subject to more stringent environmental laws.
If I could ask, I mean, we're, this is specifically for the Kennedy Stadium, if we could keep the comments towards specifically toward the Kennedy Stadium, we can talk about the Jefferson Stadium in the next...
Sure, that both schools have current air quality laws that subject them to more stringent environmental review by Bloomington, and the EAW would talk to that as well. So, it says that Section 7030.0030 noise control requirement, and it says, "Any municipality having authority to regulate land use shall take reasonable measures within its jurisdiction to prevent established land use activities to exceed the noise area classification." And so, Van Klaassen did do the sound study. It was funny, because when we first did the planning commission, it was actually Wold Architect that...
Can I talk about the sound study, please?
Oh, sure.
I'm just going to run out of time.
Oh, I don't think they're going to hold us right to 10 minutes. They talked for about 25 minutes or a half hour.
They're the staff, that was the staff presentation.
That was a staff presentation. Yeah, so, for the Van Klaassen noise study, I've consulted with a retired sound engineer who said he's never seen a study submitted without the data and assumptions that go along with it, which would be like the grid data they use in the computer modeling. So, there was no distance from house to point of source of sound, no direction for the source of sound, there is no wind, humidity, those types of things all impact the carrying of sound, the direction of sound, and then also barriers, which would be any of the buildings along the school or the houses, which have a reflective effect on sound. So, without that data, it's impossible for us, and I would argue you, to decide whether that sound model is accurate, because we can't see the data. I tried to get it six times, just to see where they were getting these numbers from and how they were getting them. We have the methodology, and we have numbers related to previous studies, but we don't have the actual inputted data that they used in their model. And so, when you have reflection of sound off a barrier, the sound that's reflected compounds with the sound that's directed, and it adds three decibels, which actually puts us over the L10 number for ordinances. So, those are the types of things, or I just don't feel like there's either enough information, the information is incomplete, we don't have the ability to look at it or the time to look at it, that help warrant the reason we want to have an EAW on this. There's also the impact of lighting, they looked only really at the uplighting, which there is still ball tracker lighting listed as TLCBT575 is still on the plans that were revised for April 3rd.
Even if they had eliminated the ball tracker lighting, there would still be a light dome that would connect these two projects. That's how we see it as connected, because when you talk to starry sky people, when you talk to astronomy people, when you talk to weather people, they know that that's a connected, that's a very small regional area. Light is a regional issue, light is not a block-by-block issue. There is a light dome that will form, and that is going to completely connect with those two areas. Water is a connected area, air pollution is a connected area. They're not separate, they're not segregated, and it's a very small distance. It's also within a mile radius of the Minnesota migratory corridor. Also with that ball tracker light, the petition that you received, the petition that you Also with that ball tracker light, the petition that you received, the petition that you read, all dealt with everything that was just said tonight. The ball tracker had already been taken away before we wrote that petition. That was after the ball tracker and that includes only the downlights, the dome that is going to be occurring. Everything that he's talked about, we've addressed page by page in our research with documentation. So for us to go through and reiterate everything we said, you've got it in your hands. I don't know that you have enough time. It's like you have to read through now, after this school district and the planning division has said what they've said, now read through the packet and then understand exactly where we're coming from. Speculation about what the MPCA would feel, they can't speculate on that. You have to get the MPCA here to speak for themselves. If you need that information, maybe we just don't have enough information yet. This is a lot to comprehend and a lot to say no to in just the short amount of time we've got tonight. There's a lot on the, there's a lot on the ground here. When I spoke with the MPCA about the water and the wells over in the Lindale corridor, they said that they, they don't even know how groundwater works in relation to drinking water yet. It's so sophisticated and so elusive to them that the contaminated groundwater below the Lindale corridor, they don't know how any kind of water that moves in from drainage off of Kennedy, off of the neighborhoods into that area would affect groundwater seeping into the drinking water wells that are below it. These are complex issues. They, they want to go forward with their project. We just want some oversight. We just want to make sure everything is done so that the people are safe. Does it change something forever? It changes something forever. The lights and the sound have never been there, not in that area. Birds have never seen it. The insects have never seen it. The people have never seen it. It's irreversible. Once you put those four poles up with all that light and that sound, you don't, you can't take that back. One thing they don't even talk about is the ball tracker, is, is the, is the flashing colored lights that they're going to put on the stadium for autistic people.
I also just want to say, related to the traffic side, they said that it was existing trips. Well, now we're talking about two games that used to be held fighting for that one space. They can now have two games on the same night, and so there is extra traffic coming through that area and there is extra air pollution coming through on those idling cars, whereas they used to share that stadium. Now they have two different events.
I think we set the, start the clock at five minutes. We, we, you can have five more minutes here. We don't want to cut you off, too.
I've been cut off for more. PTSD. About it. Anyway, yeah, so that was one other point about the events. And then also the Audubon interactive map for the important bird area. Yes, that green swath is the actual important bird area. Stopover grounds, however, are what birds use along their corridors to find nesting, breeding, fuel, all the things that they need to continue their journey on their migratory path. Those stopover grounds are very much Nine Mile Creek, are very much Highland Hills Park. And I, as a person who loves to bird, can show you, and you can look at eBird, which is a Cornell tracker for birds, they use these sites and if they don't have the opportunity to breed, nest, refuel, it impacts the species. And there's, there's, in the, in the petition, there are studies that show, tons of studies that show the impacts on them when they cannot use their stopover grounds. And a deterrent from a stopover ground is anthropogenic noise, light, artificial light at night in particular. And so we're asking for the mitigation needed to ensure that these lights are off at certain points during these migrations. We're asking for the landscaping mitigation to ensure the habitats are improved. We're, we're just asking for the mitigation. Like, we could still have the stadium, but we need to do the review that we can get the mitigations in place.
We all live in these areas where, so we know there's birds there that are also migrating through. We get thrushes through, and I live right on O'Shawkebee, right across from the high school itself. We have these things in our neighborhoods. We have them because they're contiguous in backyard gardens. You've all promoted these rain gardens. You've all promoted native plantings. We're moving them into this neighborhood. That's a great thing and this is what we need to help to stop this from reversing that effect.
You know, as far as wildlife, when I was a kid, there were no trumpeter swans around here. And now we have two nesting pairs. And I've seen them over on the Kennedy side as well, and that was an endangered species and it's just starting to come back. So to say that it won't impact any of our waterfall, I don't think is an accurate statement.
I should just check.
Council, do you have any questions based on, on what you've heard? Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. In terms of the geographical piece that was brought forward in terms of the site, these are two separate sites. So can you just help me just understand how you see these as phased?
Yeah, so the air, so the lighting creates what we call sky glow. We actually have a letter that I sent in today, too, from our starry skies representative. And sky dome is the light effect over the above. So I don't know if you tried to see the auroras recently?
If you could excuse me one second. If you have something to hand out, could you please hand it to the council secretary?
So a lot of people could see the auroras where they live in different darker towns, right? And a lot of people in Bloomington could not see those things. Some people in Bloomington could, but that is the kind of thing that, you know, that light dome, wherever you live, can impact. Now, that carries for around a mile and a half, two miles at least in each direction. And then here, the dark skies person we talked to said it would definitely be overlap in the middle, which is the Nine Mile Creek area. So there is places of, ways of looking at it in that way. There's also in the water, yes, there are two separate watersheds, but the Kennedy one goes into the Nine Mile, which goes into the lower Minnesota watershed. So they are still connected. Like, there's so many different ways of looking at it. Yes, you have two technically separate fields, but the traffic, the water, the air, the light, all those things do carry. So it's, it's, it's again, like, you have to look at them in the instances where the crossover meets.
Pollution is regional and we live in a world and we live, we have to look at greater, a greater view than just the myopic sense of this is on Kennedy and this is at Jefferson and there's three miles in between. All of this is connected. We've got birds migrating from South America through.
I just wanted to make one more point, that they keep quoting 2,500, and that doesn't include the band and it does not include the football team and the, the staff. I mean, that'll get you over the 5,000, which is a mandatory mark right there.
If they're connected or phased.
If they're connected, yes. Yep.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for being here today and speaking. I know it can be very nerve-wracking to be on that side of the podium, so. So you made a comment that you're not necessarily against the stadiums, that you just want the mitigations. So why do we have to do an environmental review? Why don't we just do the mitigations?
Because no one's worked with the neighborhoods in 50 years from the school side.
But I mean, there are environmental reviews of other stadiums in other states, and so we know what the mitigations are. So why don't we just, like, why, why, why go through the process of an environmental review? Why don't we just say, hey, school district, can you please put these mitigations in?
I asked that November 2nd and November 30th at the public hearings.
And so no response at all? Okay.
But there are, there are plenty of people that are against the stadiums. I mean, the 200, the 200 signatures that were on the petition are just a fraction of all the people that have...
Yeah.
...raised their voices. And so there are, there are many, many people who think that the stadium should have just been saved at Lincoln Stadium and a bigger, better stadium been built, which made sense because the population is dwindling. We only have enough students for one high school, really. We don't have the finances and the money. So there's a lot of reasons why some people don't want it at all.
I just wanted to clarify the statement. So it sounds like maybe petitioners have varying opinions on...
Yeah, but I did ask on the 2nd and the 30th, bringing up the bird issues, what mitigation we could do, and I've never received a response, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you. Yes, thanks for coming, guys. I know this is a challenge and everybody's heart's in the right place. We are all on the same team. I really want you to feel that way. I don't want you to walk out of here saying you didn't get enough time or you didn't get the chance to prepare. Trust me, it was hard to read 2,500 pages, but I got it done over the weekend because I care about what you all think. I really do. I will, I, I wanted to point out a couple of things, and so I'm not any, these stadiums are not in my district. One is in Councilmember Nelson's district and one of them is Councilmember Revis's district. But Lincoln Fields is in my district, okay? What I find really interesting, and this is not meant to be a challenge, but, and I'll limit my comments to Kennedy right now, there's only 1.2 miles between Lincoln Stadium and Kennedy Stadium, the proposed Kennedy Stadium. And I, in the time that I've been a council member and the time that I've been watching council since I've lived in that area almost 10 years, no one who lives around Lincoln Stadium has ever come to us and said, you're doing damage to the, the environment, you're doing damage to this, damage to that. And you all are saying to us, you would propose that they build a bigger, better stadium right there, when if you believe your regional, like, sentiments, which I completely understand and 100% agree, I saw my first firefly ever in my yard last year. I was super excited because I miss them terribly. I grew up in Pennsylvania and I had fireflies every day. So like, I completely get it. But this feels like it's, it's less about stadiums and more about, like, explicitly, in your case, because you are Jefferson folks, don't do it in my backyard. And I, I want to ask you to address that if you can for me because the Lincoln folks have been dealing with this for 50 years. And they're only, it's only 2.7 miles to Jefferson, by the way. So it's less distance between Lincoln and Jefferson and Lincoln and Kennedy than between Kennedy and Jefferson themselves. But we don't hear people talk about this and you all are not proposing, we get rid of stadiums altogether. You're proposing that we go back and build bigger, better stadium in Lincoln. And I find that interesting considering your arguments tonight. So I'd love for you to have the opportunity to do that.
It's one point of light versus two points of light.
That, that's a fair comment. I understand that. But, but if you can, just, bird migrations are bird migrations and, I mean, I, I just would love to help you if you can. Please tell me why, what those folks are dealing with is not a concern, but what you're dealing with might be.
So as far as I understand it, they've had, they have that commercial area there, the gas stations, they have been having stadium noise and light for decades at this point, since at least the 70s, as I understand it. But these two areas have never had this. So the birds, the wildlife, the dusk emergent species like bats, fireflies, they've never had the light or the noise of either of these things, which the studies show anthropogenic noise, light at night, especially artificial light at night, does impact these creatures. So I would say the creatures are unfortunately used to it or have already left the Lincoln area. These two areas, they've never had this.
That, that's a fair comment and I appreciate what you're saying. I would argue that with the proximity to 35W and both the noise and lighting that exists there, plus the fact that we have a major parking, sorry, car dealership and other things like that, that if, again, if you think that it's about a regional concept and not a very specific one, the Kennedy folks are, are in the same boat that the Lincoln folks are in already.
We're not actually. We're closer to the river because we don't have that corridor.
You're saying Jefferson. I'm talking about Kennedy.
No, she's Kennedy.
On Kennedy. Yeah.
So you're saying that 98th Street in Nicolet doesn't have a bubble problem, but 98th and Lindale and 98th and 35W, which are less than a mile away?
I'm saying that, that because we're closer to the river corridor than Lincoln Stadium is by 10 blocks, that makes a difference.
Yes, I, I, I agree with that. I do agree with that. I was addressing the commentary about the fact that they have commercial areas and things like that around Lincoln that already create the, the, the lighting bubble and...
There is definitely a lighting bubble and exists in a, at a point, but you're talking about massively increasing that and increasing that, you know, onwards from, you know, if you have main street lighting and things, right? It's like, almost like ambient. It's light that they're used to having. We're talking about 1,500 lumens on four poles each that is going to be increased after dusk all the way to 10:00 PM. That's a big difference in the amount of light that these creatures, wildlife people even, are going to experience up to that point at night.
Okay. I appreciate you guys being willing to answer my questions. I, I always sound a little bit more blunt than I intend to be.
No, I think it's a fair question.
But reading, reading the studies that we supplied, Mr. Revis, reading the studies that we supplied in the book, in, in the petition are very illuminating and...
Sorry. No bottom handed.
Yeah. I didn't mean that.
Appreciate, I appreciate it. Thank you for addressing my concerns.
And some birds do make, they, they adjust their behavior around some of those areas, but some birds don't. And there's studies on both of those. Very fair.
Councilmember Revis, questions?
Not, just comments. I guess, I, I live nearby. You all know where I am.
Mr. Revis is my neighbor, actually.
So I can tell you with certainty that after a couple of beers, I don't mind the noise and the light, but when I'm in my backyard trying to relax and there is a game or something happening at the school late at night, it's bothersome. But I guess we have the tendency to get used to certain things. As for the animals, I, I kept track of millions of birds that flew through the spring, through the area. I, there, there were countless nights that I was sitting out there trying to see if I could see them fly by, but, you know, it's almost impossible. Sometimes the ones that make a lot of noise, like geese or, or sort of the robins flying by, by the, close to a million one night, I remember reading 800,000 birds flew just over the house.
Yeah.
It's kind of amazing. I never got to see them, but it's just to know the facts that they do. I'm not against the stadiums, I can say that, but at the same time, the mitigations, if something could be worked out without us having to vote on this, it would be beneficial for everybody. But I would kind of encourage my colleagues that if we had to vote to encourage the school district and the planning division to have more studies in regards to this, that would be great.
Thank you.
Again, it's just a suggestion. I, I mean, the stadiums will be beneficial in many ways, but at the same time, if anything could be done to prevent somehow diminishing the habitat or the, the flyways of the birds, it would be great.
We're pushing closer and closer to the river.
You know, I can tell you with certainty, I sit in the backyard and I can hear that noise and it's pretty annoying, but like I said, a couple of drinks and...
Thank you, Councilmember.
But the birds don't have that pleasure of having a drink and forgetting about it, right?
All right, and, and thank you all. I think we're going to bring up the folks from the school district. Mr. Verbrugge?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, as Babcock referenced, the amount of information that is in the packet and, and the amount of time that the council typically has to review a packet. And so I do just want to share with everybody that at the meeting on May 20th, the council recognized that and asked staff to provide that information as soon as possible so there was an appropriate level of time for reviewing the voluminous amount of information. Our staff sent notification to the council on Thursday, May 23rd, that we had uploaded all of that information onto a dedicated website or webpage on our website. And so council and the communities had the benefit of being able to see all of this information for more than 10 days now, 12 days, which is far in excess of what we typically do with an agenda packet. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that the amount of information that's been available and the time to review that information is, has been appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. I'd like to call up now from the school district, Dr. Jenna Mitchler, our Assistant Superintendent. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, city council members and mayor. So yeah, I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of Bloomington Public Schools. And I also just learned a little earlier today that I'd be speaking to all of you. So I'm grateful for the opportunity and I just wanted to say thank you, first of all, for hearing from everyone tonight, including from us. We definitely all have a shared commitment to the well-being and education of our community's children because it's really the foundation upon which we continue to build a brighter future for all of our residents here in Bloomington. So I have a couple of prepared notes here I'd like to share with you, and those are on behalf of the school district and the superintendent in Bloomington Public Schools. And I'll just start by saying we recognize the critical role that you all play as city council members in shaping the policies and creating an environment that supports the growth and the development of our students. We remain steadfast in Bloomington Public Schools in our belief and support for the stadium facility at Kennedy High School. Our proposed plans are well within the intended uses for school zoning and will positively impact our students and the school community. The new stadium facility will enhance school spirit. It'll improve our athletic programs. It'll provide educational opportunities and ultimately it will benefit, benefit our schools and our community. Our students here in Bloomington deserve the same opportunities and facilities that other schools throughout the metro area enjoy.[1719.53] Many of our neighboring schools already have more modern stadiums that boost their athletic programs, their school spirit and their enrollment, which is something we definitely are looking to do in Bloomington as well. It's time that we provide our students with the same advantages. So we hope that we can work together towards enhancing the educational facilities and ensuring that our students have access to the best possible academic and athletic environments here in Bloomington. So thank you again tonight for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. County, council, any questions of Dr. Mitchler? Councilmember Lowman, councilmember Carter, and then councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lowman.
Thank you, mayor. And thank you for being here this evening, being a product of Bloomington Public Schools. I, I get it. Just really just one question for you. With respect to these stadiums, if you were only able to be, build one of them, would there be an impact?
Well, certainly we in Bloomington Public Schools look at inclusivity and we would love to be able to provide the same opportunities for all of our students, regardless of which school that they attend. We do view these, these two stadiums as separate projects. And so what we don't want to do is create an opportunity for one group of students and not others. But we do view them as separate projects.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, mayor. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So similar to the question that I asked the petitioners, is the school district working with the architects to kind of mitigate those environmental effects in addition to working with planning to address noise and lighting and all of the things that have been brought up?
Yeah, you can hear some of the examples with the lighting that we've, that have been shared already. I just, I'm going to turn around and look at our, one of our architects who's here with us tonight, consultants, to see if there's anything else he might want to share.
Good evening. Welcome. If you could identify yourself, please.
Sure. I'm Paul Aplikowski with Old Architects and Engineers. We of course are, are doing our best to mitigate everything in the projects and they, and how they affect the city. So there's a number of ordinances in state laws and your, your team and your, your, all of your zoning ordinances are in alignment with those things. And, and again, as you may know, we've gotten the project to be within compliance. We originally didn't think we could do that, but again, with the collaboration with the city, we've managed to get lighting and sound to be within compliance. So I would say emphatically, yes, we're, we're doing our best to meet all the requirements that we know exist.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, mayor. Maybe just following up on that, are you also working with the concerned people from the neighborhoods? Frankly, I met with them prior to the previous planning commission and that was one of their frustrations. And I heard that frustration again today that they just, they haven't been worked with and they have concerns and they're looking for certain mitigations. And it sounds like what I'm hearing is you're open to doing as much as you possibly can, but they're not hearing this. And so I'm trying to figure out what the disconnect is there and if there's an opportunity to fix that disconnect.
You know, that would be our aim, is to fix any disconnects in communication that might exist. We certainly always are open to and want to hear from all of our constituents and the people we serve in Bloomington and in Bloomington Public Schools. And so we would want to have lines of communication like that. Yes.
Councilmember Rivas.
Thank you, mayor. I just have a different question, I guess. How building the stadiums help the students academically? I, I mean, and I would like to hear a, a very tangible explanation on that. Because as far as I, I can see, yeah, it creates opportunity for sports and all of that. But I, the schools in Bloomington are not, I wish I could say they're the best out there, but they're not. And we all know that. It's a fact. So how building two stadiums will help the students falling behind academically?
And, and I'm, excuse me, Dr. Mitchell, I'm, I'm asking to answer that, but I also want to remind the council, we're, we're talking about a petition about an environmental assessment worksheet right here. We've got to, I think we have to stick on, on the topic right now. We could go, we could go a lot of different ways very quickly if, if we're not careful. So why don't we ask this question, but let's make sure we stick to our, our environmental assessment worksheet discussion.
Mayor, I, in my belief, I think it has an effect on, on everything as much as in the environment. I would say that, uh, the investment could be made in improving the academic performance of our schools, whether they have built in the stadiums. And a lot of my constituents have that belief also. So I would just like to get an answer on that, if possible at all.
And yes, and we can, we can answer this one, but as I said, I, I want to make sure that we stick to the, to the question at hand here.
Thank you for that, council member. And what I would share is, you know, I have myself and I have heard others have a semantics change in terms of what we call some of the programming that we offer for our students. And so, you know, historically, we've called things extracurriculars on top of the curricular offerings. Really what they are is co-curricular offerings because we truly believe that students having an opportunity to be involved in activities, sports, it, it improves their social and emotional abilities. It improves their connection and relationships with one another, their sense of belonging, and that those things then impact the academics as well. What I will say about the stadiums is that, what I have heard from our athletic directors and our principals is that accessibility for students is a challenge when they have to get to a stadium that's outside of their school attendance area or further from their, their home. Whereas students, for example, in the Kennedy community would be, have more opportunity perhaps to walk to the stadium to be a part of the, whatever event is happening there on, on any given day.
Thank you. I still believe though that if it gives them the opportunity to participate, yes, but not the affordability. And in many, many cases, that's the reason why a lot of the students don't participate in sports, because they can't afford to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Rivas. Are there any specific, uh, thanks for being here, by the way. I apologize. It, this is tough for everybody, right? So appreciate everybody's willingness to work through this. Is, is there, are there any specific mitigation measurements that you have heard about, either through the petition review or through conversations you've had with the public or amongst yourselves, that you are intending to implement that might not be currently on the plan? Anything that you all have come up with yourself that you would like to propose? Or anything that helps lessen maybe some of the concerns that you're either hearing tonight or have heard through petition?
Thank you, council member. I think I would ask again for my friend Paul to come to the microphone. Okay. No, we don't have anything to share then. Thank you.
Okay. It sounds like you might be open to that. I, I recognize that what you're telling us is that you are, and Mr. Mayor, I, I think I heard this, that they have done what they could do to meet the requirements that we have in front of us, in front of them, right? The, without, and I mentioned this earlier, without us adding more requirements to our code, we can't hold you against those things and deny you anything because it's not in the code and you're in compliance with our code. I would ask you to try to go above, above and beyond, right? Especially on environmental grounds because the entire, with something these, this large and with these kind of implementations that are permanent, that are meant to be there for 30 years so that students can make, take advantage of them. There, in my opinion, even if you think about it almost morally, there's an obligation to try to go above and beyond what's specifically written in code, right? So to the extent that you can, I, I would suggest that you maybe can bring back some things. We might be delighted, you know, with some of the ideas you come up with, especially with smart architects on deck who probably know the latest and greatest in LEED and other certifications. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Councilmember Muah.
Thank you, mayor. Just one kind of a specific question. How often are the two high schools having events concurrently? Because as I'm looking, sitting here and digging through their schedules, we haven't had an intra-city football game since 2018. We don't have overlapping track meets. We don't have, as I understand, they're both in different conferences. How often currently right now and in the future are we going to have both stadiums going at the same time?
Yeah, I don't have exact numbers with me here tonight, but what I will say is I, I don't anticipate that there are going to be any major changes where we would have many more, for example, home games than we have had in the past for our football teams.
Because my, my one concern is, and I grew up in a town that had two high schools. And that intra-city rivalry is intense and it's big. And we had one stadium, but, but it was an island, so it wasn't by any neighbors. It wasn't an issue. But even then, when it was an intra-city game, the parking lot overflowed for probably two miles. And so that is a concern that I would have if we're having those intra-city, because I think that builds community, but that also presents additional problems.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Sorry, can I ask councilmember Muah just a quick clarification? When you say intra-city, do you mean Jefferson and Kennedy playing each other?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions of the assistant superintendent? Very good. Thank you much.
Thank you.
So council, we've, we've, we've heard information. We've got a lot of information in front of us that we've had for up to 10 days, as, as I understand. It's more than that, exactly. And, but it was a considerable amount of information and a lot to consider on this. And one way or another, I'd, I'd like to hear your thoughts. And if we head down the, the route of denial, we need findings of fact. We need, we need to be able to, to frame this up in a, in a finding of fact. And I want to make sure that we, I mean, we understand and recognize that this is not the decision on the final site plan. This is not whether or not the projects are going to be given land use approval. This is whether or not on EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet would be necessary before we move forward on this. So we got to make sure we, we, we focus on, on that specific question. Councilmember Nelson and councilmember Lowman. Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just have a couple of follow-up questions, not for the part of the, I was standing there, but people brought stuff up that I wanted to ask our staff about. There was something about air quality standards at both of the high schools. I assume this project has to meet whatever those standards are. Is that accurate? And is that something that would be looked at?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, council members, you know, it's, it is certainly not my area of expertise. But as part of any building project, there are, there are a variety of building codes that have to be met. You know, the stadiums themselves, one of the factors that cause emissions are buildings. You know, heating, cooling systems, that has, that has its own environmental impact. And what's being proposed by the applicant is bleachers effectively. So there isn't that heating or cooling system that could contribute emissions that would have to be mitigated. But in terms of the actual requirements that the school district has to follow, I'm just not familiar with them.
Okay. Maybe could I ask that of the school district, if they're familiar with them and if they believe their plan complies with that or?
Anyone from the school district comfortable with that one?
We, we do not know the answer to that question, but we can certainly take it up and try to find some answers for you all.
To the best of my knowledge, there's not a separate set of air quality regulations for schools other than the mechanical code and the boiler plants and generators have some regulation, but in general, there's not a different code for schools that I'm aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, I think one I would.
I, I did, I did see your hand up. Please.
Just because I was in touch with Lauren Dickerson of the MPCA about this and she's the one who identified the two air quality permits at the schools and I believe they are HVAC related. So I think it's regards to the concessions buildings that are being constructed and possible heating and cooling in those buildings. I can forward you the information that she sent on the air quality permits.
And, and there, there's the concern that a concessions building would tip them over the.
No, it's just that the air, existing air quality permits that the two schools have make the MPCA the regulatory authority for any of the air quality of which noise is related. So any violations would have to go to the MPCA upon reporting. I understand it.
Okay, thank you.
And then my second question for staff, again, you know, there's a lot of talk about mitigations and, and what can and can't be done and that sort of thing. Does the EAW require any mitigations if it had findings of any sort? Does it require anything or was it just be information? And if the plan met state law, city codes, watershed district rules, potentially MPCA rules, if it met all of those?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, council members, I, I think it, I think it could. There, there's only been two EAWs in the city within the last 10-plus years. And so it's not something that we, we deal with that often. But I think the purpose of the AEW is to identify what those potential impacts could be and then, you know, identify what mitigation factors could be to address them. The, the code requirements that we have, whether it's noise, lighting, stormwater management, those are mitigation factors. You know, the, the, the alternative is to not have those improvements and you have more glare. You have lighting that impacts peaceful enjoyment of your property. You have stormwater management that contributes to additional runoff and flooding. So the, the codes that we have are mitigation factors for some of those environmental impacts.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Lowman.
Yeah, mayor, I got a, a couple of questions and I got a, then after that I got a process suggestion for you, mayor. Maybe you already have some ideas. So in terms of this, the staff report, can you just tell me how this was prepared? Was, was any sustainability staff member a part of the conversation in putting this together?
Um, Mr. Mayor, council members, there was not. I was the, I would say the primary author in conjunction with Mr. Toski. And really it focused on the elements that were identified in the petition themselves and how they related to, how we felt that it related to code requirements and essentially our response to the points that were raised in the petition.
And that's pretty typical though, across the state of how this would be handled, right? I mean, because most cities don't have sustainability of staff, right?
Mr. Mayor, council member, I believe that would be true. I think in, as it relates to like a land use application like this does, you know, the cities, communities that have a planning department, I think the planning department would take a lead or use a consulting planner to kind of draft something similar to what we prepared.
And then is that what we did with the, the work that we did in, in the South Loop? Did we follow that same process with that? Just, just, just so I'm knowledgeable.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council members, that actually, there was a very detailed environmental report. It's called an A U A R. And that is, as I understand it, because I have limited knowledge, but a hybrid between an EAW and an EIS. In the South Loop District, that's where we anticipate the most intense development in the city, where we anticipate the majority of our growth. And so that absolutely surpassed any sort of threshold established by the state. And so we followed the state's process in establishing an A U A R to identify what those impacts could be.
Thanks for that. So then with regards to this noise study, I know a little bit about noise, having served on the, on the NAC Commission for several years. The fact that the information wasn't there, you know, does that give the staff any pause with that? Have we seen that before in other, other processes?
Mr. Mayor, you know, council member, I've been the project planner in a few projects that had noise studies and I've not seen the, the data that's being referred to, like the raw data from the modeling. I've, I've not experienced having that before.
Okay, I just, just the last time I recruit, I don't get, I don't want to go back and forth, but I just recall the last time we had the, the one building that was over here. I thought that, that stuff was, was included when, when the, when the residents were, were upset about. I can't remember exactly where it was, somewhere, yeah, Verizon, I think it was the Verizon piece. I, I thought I remember seeing it in there, but we don't have to go back and forth on, on that. That, that just seemed strange that that data wasn't there. The final piece on this that I had a question for is around, you know, this idea of a, of a lighting dome kind of going between both, both schools, creating, you know, one site in a sense. Does staff have any comment around that at all or any thinking around that? Or am I kind of left on my own to kind of determine?
No, Mr. Mayor, council members, you know, we have very detailed lighting requirements. And I think it's important to compare the, the lighting improvements that are at Lincoln today and what's being proposed by the school district now. At Lincoln, they're the more traditional flood-style lights that have no shielding. And so the amount of glare and light pollution at Lincoln today is far more than what would exist with the proposed stadium. In terms of the light dome, you know, I, I'm not familiar with how that's determined or what, what process is used to determine that. What I do know is that when we look at the on-the-ground lighting or illumination that would exist from the proposed site, as you get less than, you know, essentially it's, it's almost zero across the street in the case of Third Avenue. And so that's what we're looking at. We're looking at to make sure that the fixtures are shielded to minimize glare. And we're looking at to ensure that light trespass is very limited on adjacent properties.
I was just going to say a process piece. I wonder, as councilmember Nelson has mentioned earlier, this idea of having the conversation about the phasing and the connectedness of it. It makes sense to kind of start there and then work our way down to the, I don't know what you're thinking, mayor. I just.
I, I was, I was, I was waiting for everyone to get their questions out, their comments out, and then perhaps everybody start to think about where, where you might end up on this. And I, and I'm happy to kick it off and I, I appreciate the, I appreciate the staff presentation. I appreciate what we're hearing from the, the residents. I appreciate from the, the school district. A lot of information there, as I said. In listening to it all and reading copious amounts of information and kind of pondering this, and then also just understanding what, what we're talking about here as somebody who lives within sound distance of, of, of the old Lincoln site right now. I, I just, again, while I appreciate the, the concerns of the, of the neighbors and the neighborhood, I just can't agree with, with a number of the, the contentions that they make. I, I don't believe this is a single project. They are three miles apart, separated by a freeway. I, I think the, the notion that they are in two different watersheds says a lot. I mean, these are, these are two separate areas. I, I don't believe they're a single, they're a single project. I don't believe they're a single, they're a single project. I don't believe that the issues that have been raised meet the threshold of being a permanent damage. I mean, we live in a city with Highland Ski, with the airport, with the Mall of America, with a freeway running right down the middle, a freeway running across the northern edge and a freeway on the western edge. There is, there could possibly be permanent damage. I don't see a high school football stadium, a high school soccer stadium, lacrosse stadium that's used frankly five times. I mean, you think of a high school football home schedule, it's maybe four or five games a year.
Up to 40 times.
Thank you. Thank you. I just don't see the number of times this would be used in the evening, creating a distraction, creating a disruption, creating a light dome that is in any way impactful in a negative sense. I just don't, just don't see it any more than what we already have in this community. And so I agree with the, I agree with the notion that the two football fields probably have less impact than the single football field, especially considering the parking up around the Lincoln Field and considering where that is and having the two separate, allowing the students, allowing the fan bases, allowing the communities to be in their own area when they go to a home game, a home event of some kind, I think just outweighs any of the potential negatives of this. And if, I mean, if, I know the mitigations that we've talked about and the possible mitigations, I would like to have the school district continue those and continue looking at those as much as possible. But I just, I cannot see enough of, I cannot agree with the possible negative impacts to the point that we would deny or that we would approve this petition and move forward with an EAW. I just don't think it meets that threshold. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to start by thanking everybody who has engaged on this issue, the petitioners, but we've also received a significant number of emails and a petition from people who want the stadium. So it definitely has generated a lot of interest in the community and we've heard from a lot of people and so just really appreciate everybody who's weighed in. And so as I kind of think about the major issues that have been brought up, first, the noise issue, I am one, I do trust the experts' analysis. We didn't find some random company, right? It was a reputable company that does this work. Also, I live very close to the Lincoln football field and I hear the football games on Friday nights and it does not bother me one bit. We actually sit outside in the backyard to hear the crowd, like it's very, it just makes me feel like we're in a community. And I've never heard my neighbors complain about it. One of my good friends lives, her house butts right up against the company and the stadium and she's like, nope, it's totally, I mean, like people just, like Lana said earlier, we've heard nobody complain about the Lincoln stadium and I, again, I live right by it. As it relates to the lighting, you know, I feel like it sounds like now they are in compliance, the plans are in compliance, and I would say obviously they need to stay in compliance. The points about a light dome, I mean, I lived in rural Iowa for a long time and I could see the stars. What we see here in Bloomington are not stars, they're airplanes, right? Like we, we have a giant dome over Bloomington and that's why almost nobody could see the Aurora, right? We had to drive out of the cities. So I just can't wrap my head around one stadium creating so much more of a dome. And I looked up, I looked up the night sky map, I think you can Google it. Bloomington is purple, right? Like it's one color right now. We have so much light pollution that I can't see that a stadium would make a huge difference and specifically for Kennedy, I mean, that's already an area with a lot of light pollution. Traffic and parking, obviously now in compliance, but I think we need to continue to monitor it heavily. And then as it relates to the animals and the environment, you know, I think if this, the fact is we're in a built-out community, right? Like we don't have, we don't get to gobble up a cornfield and build a new school and put in a new stadium like some of our other suburbs do. We have to use what we already have or we could actually build upon like our actual natural spaces. I think that those things have been considered in the past and I don't want to go there. And so in my mind, there's already turf, there's already rubber, there's already buildings. And so I would rather build a stadium where there are already those things in place versus look at other parts of our city that may not be developed at all, right? And so, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. And then the helpful information that we're not in a conservation corridor at either site, so that's very helpful. So therefore, I do agree with the staff recommendation that this isn't going to cause significant environmental effects and I don't believe that it's necessary to move forward with an environmental assessment. But I do want to just say that I think it's going to be very, very important to continue to monitor the noise and the parking, the lighting, just to make sure that it is in compliance and is enforced. And I really do encourage the school district to do everything possible to work with the neighbors to mitigate any of those unintended consequences that might occur. And then I know I'm only supposed to be speaking to the EAW, but I do want to just say a couple more things. And I just want to say that our community, our school district, the young people of Bloomington really do need new stadiums. Lincoln is embarrassing. I go to other cities all the time with my kids who are young athletes and they all have very nice facilities and you come to Bloomington and it's, it truly is embarrassing. And so, you know, I just, I really, truly, truly believe that our young people in Bloomington now and into the future deserve nice facilities. It does attract families. I know people who have left Bloomington to go to school districts that have the fancy facilities and I just think it's long overdue. So, yeah, that's all in my comments there.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Alessandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I worry always when we, because we're building our city out as quickly as we are and we've got so much interest in it and all that, and that we don't necessarily, we continue even the three years that I've been on council, not have made the kinds of changes that we might want to make to our standards so that we do hold these kinds of things to a higher standard. It frustrates me that we've never put anything in front of us that would, that would raise the standard on lighting, that would raise the standard on building materials, that would raise the standard on permeable surfaces. That bugs me. But that's not what we're talking about here. What we have to talk about here tonight is, does this, does this cause a harm that overrides the compliance of what we do have on the books? And given what I asked, the questions of knowing to Councilmember Carter's point that I also live with the ramifications of, you know, Lincoln on a regular basis. And frankly, I'm one of those people, I'll just put this as a personal comment, I live at 87th and Emerson, I'm literally two blocks from 35W and I got to see the Aurora. Not the Aurora Aurora, because I went out to Afton to see that, okay? But I could see them, I could see them from my house and that's amazing, right? And that I feel like is something we should be proud of, that despite the fact that we are a built-out city and despite the fact that we have so much light, MSP, Mall of America, like you said, Mayor, all of the, and you forgot even 77, right? So there's another one on the east side, real, real close to, you know, the river, that we, with a third of our city set aside as green space, we're still able to see things and enjoy things that nobody else in the Twin Cities gets to see. And yet, you go north on the Mississippi River, north of Minneapolis, there is a heron colony there that comes back every year and grows its children and it is phenomenal and I love everything about it and it's literally blocks from the Herk and, you know, whatever. So like, nature is incredible and nature will adapt. I understand the concerns, but on noise, we have a study that suggests we're in bounds. On lighting, I think we can do better, but that's because I think we can always do better. I'd like our lighting ordinance to be way more strict, but that's me and we'll get there eventually if I have something to say about it. But right now, it's in compliance. From a conservation perspective, all I can say is, you know, Lincoln is a hop, skip and a jump from Penn Lake and I see stuff on Penn Lake all the time, including two nesting pairs of bald eagles, right? And so we're doing okay, not great, love it if it was all cornfield again, but we're doing great. And contamination, I don't have a say in that, but it seems to me that it's far enough away from anything else that's there today that, and the school would have bigger problems if there was contamination, because kids eat lunch there and drink water there and play outside on those terrains and eat dirt because they're kids and they eat dirt. So, you know, we'd have bigger problems with contamination. So on those four issues alone, given the fact that we have the standards that we do, I would deny the petition for Kennedy today. I will say, I will continue to work on increasing our standards because I think we can do better. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to just thank everyone for being involved and to my neighbors, I live in the same neighborhood as you, I definitely hear the concerns and I think the concerns are valid and real. But I also believe that they are addressed through the existing process with Planning Commission and I see that because Planning Commission is the reason we're here today. They came in with a proposal and Planning Commission said it doesn't meet the standards. We can't approve this. And so they had to go do that. They thought that they might have to go through a variance process, they believe their noise they can meet it, that they have that evidence. I candidly, as I sit here today, you know, I don't feel like it's my job under what we're being asked to determine whether or not we should have a stadium, that's up to Planning Commission. I don't believe it's up to us to determine whether the noise and sound and light and all that meets standards, that's the role of the Planning Commission. They have the final authority on that with it in process to appeal back to us. This is strictly about, does it meet either the mandatory parts? I honestly don't think it does. I don't think it's the same geographical area, just the three miles apart, the light dome effect right over 35W, it just doesn't meet that for me. I also don't believe that it meets the connected nature of it. They can build one stadium. They've had one stadium for 50 years and it has worked. And I will just tell you, it would be difficult, it would be tough on the community for one of the schools to have a nice stadium and the other one not to. But being difficult doesn't mean it can't be done. And I grew up, I went to Apple Valley High School and our football team played at Rosemont High School, seven miles away. I can tell you how happy we were about that. You know, they were not inner-city rivals, but they were same school district, same rivalry. We had the benefit of having a theater that they did not have, so. One of us won, I guess, on that. You know, and so I just, I don't see that it meets the mandatory part. In terms of, will it meet the part that it has a significant environmental impact? If it meets all of the existing standards, both in state law and city law, I don't see how I can find that it would be a significant environmental impact. I mean, those are the rules of the game and those rules cover the things that have been raised. They cover noise and sound, as I previously discussed, and I think Planning Commission will take that very seriously. They cover light, as we've discussed, and we're one of the communities that has good standards in that area. Certainly encourage them to do better and take a look at some of the recommendations of the, is it Night Sky Group? They had recommendations. Take a look at those, see if there's something we can add and improve on that. Parking and traffic, I have serious concerns. I, you know, I live by there, I don't, I'd love to see a plan from the school district of how they're going to get people to go park at the Olsons. If you don't live in the community or even in that area, you probably don't even know there's a parking lot on the other side of that, you know? And, you know, I don't see it used for events currently. So how are they going to do wayfinding? How are they going to do those things for these big events? It's a mitigation. I think it should be done. I don't think it needs the EAW to do that and I don't think it's something, because this isn't a use application, I don't think it's something we can put as a condition, it's something we can merely request that the school district work with the neighborhood and the community to address those at both schools. I'm supposed to talk about Kennedy, aren't I? So totally talking about Kennedy and Third, that's what I'm talking about. And then in terms of water, both of these, if they have enough dirt moved, will have to get watershed permits. So they will have to meet watershed requirements as well as city requirements. And in terms of habitat, you know, one proxy for that is impervious surface. They will need to meet the impervious surface requirements within our codes, which has to do with the disruption of habitat of, and in this case mainly sod. So I think we have good standards. I trust our Planning Commission will look at those very thoroughly. I encourage you to continue to talk with them and work with them. And if they don't find any of those things or any of them lacking, I trust that they'll recommend or they will deny it, you know, and that's what they did in the past. So for that reason, I just don't think this is the right tool. I hear your concerns, I agree with your concerns, I see those concerns in the neighborhoods, both at Kennedy and at Jefferson. So that's, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Lohman.
All right, Mayor, I'll make some brief comments here and then maybe it's time for some action. So, you know, this one is about Kennedy High School and the issue that I kind of run into, let me just say this right off the bat, the concerns are real. And history is an important perspective, given what's taken place there and across the city. And so I know that history, I've lived that history. And so for those folks who are neighbors who live there, totally get it, totally understand it. But we have a problem here. Essentially, it's been in this EAW request, if the evidence presented by petitioners, proposers and other persons or otherwise known to the RG demonstrate that because of the nature of the proposed project, the project may have the potential or significant environmental effects. And then we're asked to kind of go through and make these findings. Well, Kennedy already has a practice facility there and what we're basically looking to do is to put up four poles and a, you know, and basically some seats. And gosh, that's going to be real tough to make these findings here. I can't make these findings with Kennedy High School and it's difficult, even if I want to, to make a connection between Kennedy High School and Jefferson to make this one project. I didn't hear that and unfortunately, there wasn't enough time to be able to make that connection in a way that was sound and certainly, I feel for you in that regard. But we're at a position here where we've got to make decisions based on the information that was presented and whether or not it made sense, Mayor. And so given that circumstance and that situation in this particular case here with Kennedy High School, I would move forward with a motion, resolution adopting findings of fact in order denying petition for discretionary environmental assessment worksheet for the Bloomington Kennedy High School Stadium Improvement Project.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Carter regarding item 4.3, a resolution adopting findings of fact in order denying petition for discretionary environmental assessment worksheet for the Kennedy project. Counsel, any additional discussion on this? Comments or questions? Hearing none?
It won't do any good anyway.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. And we will move on now to item 4.4, a resolution relating to the environmental assessment worksheet petition for the Jefferson High School Stadium. Mr. Centenario.
Again, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, you know, they're, in the spirit that these are two different projects, I have a very similar, excuse me, a very similar slide deck, there is a lot of the same information, so I'll just try to respect everyone's time and stick to what's unique. But now we're switching to Jefferson High School and the same, we're asking you to do the same thing, only for the Jefferson site. So again, it's staff's belief that there would not be a significant environmental impact for the Jefferson stadium application. We're not asking you to approve or deny, we're just asking to make a determination of whether an EAW is required. And so Mr. Toski can probably very briefly summarize what he's already talked about.
Yeah, Mayor and members, I'll just kind of briefly go over that. I think I want to touch on one thing I may have kind of glossed over a little bit, but we heard about mandatory and discretionary EAW requirements. The analysis and the findings that you just went through with the Kennedy project remain the same for this project, so same standards. Just touching on connected and phased actions, you touched on this earlier, I just want to note that the connected actions is or, so any of those three things could be present. And phased, it's and, so all those things have to be present, so one of those statutory reading things, but I just wanted to clarify that. But everything else remains the same as far as the legal analysis.
Thank you. And so shifting gears to the Jefferson site, same argument applies. This is a different geographic region. This is a different geographic region, different neighborhood, different watershed district, and separated by a variety of transportation corridors and land uses. The existing conditions of Jefferson, again, this is really a truly a school campus between the high school and the Olson schools. The stadium, again, this is an existing athletic field, artificial turf. The surrounding is manicured turf. One interesting note about trees is that one tree was shown to be removed in the site to the north of the stadium and then two conifers. While driving out to the site, four of those trees are already dead or they are dying because they're ash trees. And so they'll have to be removed anyway. Just another image of the proposal with the home bleachers. In this case, the home bleachers are on the west side of the field and then the visitor bleachers are on the east side of the field, which is a unique characteristic. But there is also a more great, more topography in the site where the stadium is almost a little bit of in a bowl shape. And so that had to be, the accessibility had to be addressed. So there needs to be longer sidewalks in order to make sure that's still accessible for folks with disabilities. This is a slightly different bleacher design. Again, we're still within compliance with height standards. And so in this case, the stadium bleachers would be a little over 31 feet. It's a little bit short, it's not, the length isn't as great because again, the separating of home and visitor bleachers. And, you know, the comments that we heard about the parking lots to the west end of the campus, yeah, that's absolutely correct. There is a way to walk directly from the, those parking areas south and then through another parking lot. So you really do need to be a local to know what those sidewalks where they go to. Hopefully, they would be utilized because there is an abundance of surface parking within this campus. Just another view, you know, you can see the sidewalk, again, improving accessibility for pedestrians, folks with disabilities, obviously a very important component of having a successful community, community space. And then here's a similar side-by-side. There are no natural habitats on the site. The entirety is disturbed soil and the land cover is manicured grass. So I think there would be more concerns if we were, the proposal was to be removing grasslands or prairies, which are important habitats. The environmental, I guess, value of manicured turf is diminished. You know, we are going to be monitoring parking. There, you received a lot of commentary on existing parking and the issues around parking. In staff's view, it is very much an enforcement challenge. And, you know, being a teenager, at some point in my life, I also didn't really pay attention to street signs. So I think that's an enforcement, a problem that I think can be addressed between the school district and the city. I won't re-explain the noise standards. This is the same as our previous presentation. But what is important is the noise modeling that was done specifically for Jefferson. And what we see here is the L-10 model and what that impact would be to the closest neighbor, which is the neighbor just to the southwest of the stadium. And even though there is, there's still proximity to the stadium, their modeling shows compliance with the L-10 and the L-50 requirements. So again, the uplit fixtures, something that we do not allow in the city of Bloomington. So we're really looking to ensure that fixtures have some shielding so that you're orienting light or directing light in a particular location. And we also need to ensure that the amount of light that is on adjacent properties is minimal, minimal to nothing. Again, here's the photometric plans. You see the locations of the four light poles that are proposed. And then again, we're looking at the modeled light that is on adjacent properties. And in this case, I believe it was .09 foot candles. That's almost nothing. And so as part of a inspection process, you know, I have a light meter as a prop, if you want to see it, but that's something that we do, we do confirm, we do inspect. Similar graphic to what you see, the Jefferson site, it is not within a conservation corridor. They, we do not have concerns about stormwater impacting wetlands negatively. All the stormwater that would be managed is part of code-complying systems. And that would be reviewed and regulated both through the city and the watershed district. Not within a important bird area as identified by Audubon Society. And again, the Jefferson site is much farther removed from the Lindell Avenue contamination corridor. And so again, we do not have concerns that this site or the Jefferson site will have an impact on that contaminated area. With that, again, we are recommending that the council find that an environmental assessment worksheet is not required for the Jefferson stadium project.
Thank you, Mr. Centenario. Any questions for Mr. Centenario on this? Councilmember Lohman and then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Lohman?
So can we go back to that noise piece? Because I just want to make sure that I am fully grasping. So that's at the, what's the outer limit on the L-10?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the code standard is 60 decibels. And that's the over a one-hour period.
Okay. So that's the, that's the upper limit, right? So we're at 64? Help me understand that.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, that, the 64 is for the L-10 and then the 57 is for the L-50. In this graphic, we're showing the L-50. And so you're seeing the model showing a 57 decibels at the property line, so that is in compliance. The L-10 is closer. It is just below the maximum. So again, this is something that would have monitored. And if we find that it is too loud, you know, one of the mitigating factors that can be addressed is to reduce the volume.
Just as simple as that, just bringing the volume down?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not like airport noise and it's airplane noise.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, these are, these are audiovisual systems. They can be, they're monitored, they can be adjusted.
Right, yeah. Okay, I mean, that's, that's an example of an adjustment that can be made, you know, to this, this environmental effects. So thanks for clarifying that for me.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Mine was similar lines because it is so close on that and it would be something that can be moderated. There's, and I think one of the criteria we had to look at is if there's ongoing regulatory things that we can do to mitigate if there are problems. So that's, that's where I wanted to go as well. I assume that applies to light, although am I wrong in understanding that light may be less of a concern because there isn't housing to the east and west of the field?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. So north is to the right of the screen. And so the greatest impact is to the southwest. Folks that are on the corner of Johnson and Heritage Hills. There is, there is a single-family home or that's where a single-family neighborhood begins. And so there is a, there is a home on the property that is most impacted. But yet again, just given the distance between the way the light is oriented, the location of the poles, it's a very, a very small impact that is complying.
Okay. Counsel, other questions? All right, thank you. Following our process from last time, I'll ask our applicants if they, if there's anything they want to add that we haven't discussed previously here. And, understanding that we're at nine o'clock and we've got a... Petitioners, excuse me, I apologize, petitioners, my apologies. Understanding at nine o'clock, we still have a couple of other things we've got to get to on our, on our agenda this evening, so.
Sure, Doug Herzog, I'll be brief again. That last slide that Mr. Lohman was looking at, I mean, you're so close to that noise variance and I keep hearing, I believe or I think, right? And we asked for the assumptions which will bear out the noise. And Wold Architect originally said, yes, we need to do a noise study because of all the different variables. And you couldn't just use modeling to come up with this. So if you're, what was it, one decibel away from going over for those houses? That's a lot to risk to not have all your Is and Ts crossed. You could be definitely looking at some lawsuits if you're not accurate with this. I'm kind of gobsmacked that that's just being kind of overlooked, that this noise thing, you know? And you keep talking about 2,500 people. And again, I've said before, it's 2,500 and then you've got the band, which is where the stadium's going to be. So that's really where the noise should start and that brings it closer to those neighborhoods. And so that, that needs to be taken into account. I don't think it is. And that's why we asked for that information and we were stonewalled. Mike Centenario referred us to Van Klaassen and they weren't, they didn't give us the information.
Just following up on that, so the modeling data, just reiterating why it's important to be able to see that, to understand how they're getting 64 as one decibel into compliance. When we heard November 2nd and November 30th from Mr. Aplikowski that there was no way they would be able to meet the city noise ordinance, the city and MPCA, which are the same, that was stated almost 10 times to us, that they would never be able to meet the sound ordinance. So then they had an inverse square model created, which was also a computer model. It didn't work out. They couldn't make the noise levels. Then months later, suddenly there's a computer model that got that noise level. I hope you can see why we want to see the data that shows this. We don't know the distance that was measured to that house. We don't know the other impacting factors that are inputted into that to make that feeling somewhat magical result. Plus, as I showed or talked about last time, this, it's, I don't have a color printer, I'm sorry. The image that they showed had the hemispherical spreading of the sound from the sources, which again, they're using only the speakers, which is 95 decibels if you use someone pressing a button when the noise gets too loud to lower that to 95. You're also counting no crowd sound in that variation, which you cannot lower. You cannot press a button to lower crowd noise. And one instrument, Mr. Aplikowski stated, could be up to 115 decibels when all of these numbers are based on 95. So I just struggle to really accept that without being able to see the data and assumptions. I don't know how you can accept that without seeing the data that was inputted for that with all of that knowledge. Then you look at this, which is the actual model that gets you to that 64 number, convenience 64 number. There is no lines here of the sound reflecting, which would add three decibels. The sound itself reflecting off that house, the pond there, I was told by a sound engineer, can actually raise the sound volume. There are natural habitats. There is a pond right here. And then on the other side, on that map of the conservation areas and the recognized parks, there is a huge park, Heritage Hills, is directly behind the Olsons parking lot where they want to park everybody. Not included in, that is natural habitat and I would, I would say that it is natural habitat. So I just think the sound study is very problematic. I, I want to be able to believe that this isn't going to blow us out of our houses at night, but I just, I need the data to show me that that is a true equation. And I think everyone should want that data to show that that's a true equation at one decibel of difference to compliance.
This starts to become tricky because as the superintendent and I worked out, how many games would actually be played? Is that you?
No, Eric's not here.
Exactly, okay. You know, four games is what they said for football, but then it adds up because they do lacrosse, soccer, then they do JV, then they do varsity, then they do boys and they do girls, then they do intramurals, then they do championships. It could be as low as 20 games in a school year. It could be as many as 40 games. And then there's not any talk of having any kind of conditional use permit with the neighborhood so that they don't rent out the stadium to other people. It could be seven nights each season during spring and winter migration. And by the way, I don't believe it's a NIMBY issue when you're talking about migration. I think we're talking about regionalism and statewide interests here. It's not just what's in the backyard for us, it's what's in the backyard for everybody and everybody's children going forward. I'll be long gone before this effect takes hold, but your children and your children's children, your grandchildren will meet the results of what you're doing tonight. So I think bigger picture, the light dome is a real thing and I know it connects the two projects. We do still, and there's two different maps about starry skies, by the way. There is the very, very light area in Minneapolis. Gray is Bloomington. Bloomington is not quite the density of urban lighting that Minneapolis has. We're on our way to that, but because you have proposed to be a partially dark night sky city and you've signed on to that, you do have an obligation to uphold that if that's indeed your intent. So I would consider bigger, broader actions about how it will affect the entire region, not just these little areas. And that's how I see it as being connected.
And just one more to follow up. I know I'm not a sound professional, but the fact that I talked to someone who is and that was the only counterpoint that we have, I just feel like there should be something looked at related to that from another perspective. Due diligence, yeah.
And I still maintain that they're connected because you can't build one without the other. You're not going to build one stadium, you're going to build them both. So that's all I have.
Counsel, any questions, follow-up questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to be careful about kind of going back and forth, so I want to try to, try to, try to be careful with how I ask this question. So with respect to the noise piece, so, you know, the problem I'm dealing with with this, when I'm normally dealing with airport noise, you know, a plane, you can't change the plane, you can't necessarily change, you know, you've got a, you've got a path that's going there. But with, with respect to this, there is a way to mitigate that by just simply turning it down. And that's, that's the piece I'm struggling to understand. And I hear the portion about the crowd, but I do know...
And marching band.
Well, and the marching band too, and I know that, but there, but even within, and I know something about, about sound, so that really doesn't get there. It just doesn't, it doesn't get there. So that's what I'm trying to understand. You know, and certainly, I share your concern about, around the noise study. But I don't know that necessarily. I mean, Councilmember Nelson has kind of laid that out, that's, you know, maybe for planning to kind of deal with that because that's a mitigation piece that's there. But I'm trying to understand how that pins to this overall natural resources issue. And I've got other questions too in terms of...
Sure, just in response to that, airport noise, it's consistent, it's the same. Crowd noise isn't, you can't turn that down, so it's not consistent. And so you're just allowing one decibel to be the make or break, whether it meets code or not, right? Does that answer your question?
Thanks for that information.
Oh, does it answer your question?
Yeah, it does answer my question. I don't want to begin back and forth, I want to be careful of that. Next question is around the conditional permit piece. I'm not sure how that fits in with, with the discussion here because, no, we're not here to consider a conditional use permit.
Well, no, go ahead, I wasn't taking that part.
I was just mentioning conditional use permit because the potential of, the potential that we have here is increased if you look at the possibility of the school using it beyond school purposes. So that you have light and sound penetrating an area that has never seen light and sound to this degree on a regular seven-night-a-week basis during the times when birds are migrating. If you reduced, if you, if you made the games earlier, if you planted more trees, if the foundations for your plantings were more robust, different kinds of trees, different shaped leaves, this all helps to mitigate sound. 100 feet was what the magic number is, which is true. You could start it at your property line on the city and then increase it to the neighbor's property line. But without a conditional use permit, we have no guarantee that the school, when the current superintendent is gone, will continue using it only for school resources. So the...
This isn't, this isn't germane at all to our environmental...
Yeah, in fact...
...assessment worksheet.
In fact, Mayor, I mean... In, in fact, Mayor, I mean, the further you go down this pathway, it, it just locks it in. It locks it in that this, this conversation needs to be in the other, in the other, in the other germane, to, to be honest with you, the more you go down that road.
If I can go back to your previous question briefly, the crowd noise is estimated around 100 to 115 decibels. Any fluctuations in that, even listed here in the Van Klaassen, end of their study says, fluctuations beyond the noise levels used in section 3.0 would cause deviations from the predicted property line noise level. So that's why, you know, basing it on a digital sensory processor being used by an attentive person who limits the speaker sound to 95, and that's how they get their 64 compliance number, that doesn't hold true when you talk about the variations in the crowd noise. So if the crowd noise goes longer than 10% of the time, or 50% of the time during that hour, then we have to obviously measure and mitigate that after the fact and it's been built, which would be then when noise violations occur, so.
Thank you for that, and that's all the questions I have. It does raise a question on last staff, but nothing else.
Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Alessandro. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor, and this is just a good question, it might actually be first half. Has there been a, a noise study done at Lincoln, or for Lincoln? And I, I wonder, because, again, like, looking at the Lincoln map, there are houses, right, at the bottom of the Lincoln football field, and where it says portable toilets, there are houses there. And so I guess I'm just curious, like, if the sound study has been done at Lincoln, or how recent it was.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, a sound study has not been, not been completed for Lincoln.
Okay, and you-
And that, and that wouldn't be so much a stout, a sound study, as it would be taking measurements of existing sound during events.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Alessandro?
Yeah, related question, I think, as I was going to ask that question, but related to that, I would have to think that it's public record, there have been stadiums built recently around the Twin Cities and in Minnesota. The one I'm thinking of most specifically is since the Aurora, who are about 6,000, 6,000 spectators every year, are out at TCO Stadium during the summertime, and there's, they've built apartments literally on the same floor plan as the stadium, when they built that whole Minnesota Vikings area. I would have to think that there, as a matter of public record, you could get some information about sound there. Again, not to decide whether or not the right, we, we have the right numbers, but to understand what existing stadiums, who are talking between 2,500 and 6,000, are people, you know, playing and participating in this, that, and the other thing, are creating in certain times. Is there any way that, as part of your normal due diligence as, as planning, that you can look into that to validate for yourself if you think that the information that you got from this current study is enough information for you to feel like this project is in compliance? Again, I'm not suggesting, Mr. Mayor, that an EAW would do something more here to get to that, but I, it, if, if, if this, if this is something that we all agree, is something we might want some more information about, just in the, the normal course of the planning process, maybe that's something that you could look at. So I just was curious if you've ever done that, or if there's access to that, that you could try to get from, who's that, Inver Grove Heights, or, yeah, I'm just thinking about other places where you could find that information.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alessandro, you know, I think if, as staff, we have to use our professional judgment, and if we feel like there's information that doesn't seem accurate, or doesn't seem complete, we have the ability to try and address that. And we felt initially with this application that the calculations that the architect completed just wasn't enough information, and didn't take enough factors into account, which is why we really wanted, we wanted acoustic, acoustician, excuse me, to prepare a model based on widely accepted inputs. It is a model. Every model is going to have some level of assumption, some level of inaccuracy, and that's why it can't just be the model, it has to be the model plus verification. Because it's possible that the, the sound is, or the noise is a little too loud, and that there has to be an adjustment made. And there's certain things that the applicant can control, and there's certain things that the applicant can't control. With crowd noise, again, we're not talking about peak, we're talking about the noise over a period of time. And so there will be, there will be times that the peak is far over that L10 and L50 level, but it's not continuous.
Right. If you, if I understood the calculation correctly, it's at least 10% of the time in an hour, it can't be over that number. Or is that, or more than 10% of the time, it can't be-
It's hard, it's hard to say. But yeah, the, the L10, L50, the, the sound level that has not exceeded more than 10% of the time. So it is, and I'm already getting messed up with my words, but again, L10 is going to be a higher level, because that sound would only be exceeded 10% of the time. The 50, L50, obviously a much lower level, because that level would be exceeded up to 50% of the time.
Okay. So, doesn't mean that it can't go over from time to time, it just can't be sustained more than 10% of the time in a given hour.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor. Have you ever been at the Vikings stadium when it's packed in there? I mean, probably, I, I'm, I'm assuming you have.
But, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I've been, I'm a big Badger fan, so I've been to Camp Randall.
Well, I mean, you know where I'm getting to, though. I mean, if you've been in there, or, or at the Wolves games recently, the noise doesn't stop, it goes on and on for an hour. If these kids are as passionate as we all believe they are, I mean, that noise is going to go up for longer than, than 10% of it one hour. I mean, you know, I'm not a big player, but I, I, I go watch a lot of sports, and, and the reality is, as you stated, as you admitted, that the noise is going to go up. We don't know with certainty whether that noise is just going to be over the limit, substantially over the limit for 10% of the time. It just all depends on how passionate the people are into the game, right? So there's a valid reason in there for them to be asking for what they ask. Again, I'm not an expert, I'm not going to claim to do, I do have a lot of equipment for sound, because I shoot a lot, and I want to make sure that my ears are good another 20 years, if I live that long. But, you know, I have a lot of equipment at home that I measure the sound. As a matter of fact, I did a lot of shooting over the weekend. But, you know, there, all, it all depends on how people react at that given time. It all depends on what caliber I'm shooting at that one point, that the sound is going to go. Even if I have a suppressor in my weapon, still, the sound changes. It varies with whatever is happening at that point, you know. So to me, is there any way that you can actually have a, a real life test on the sound? Let's do it in the old stadium to corroborate yours, your computer model, whether it's accurate or not.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, the only way to verify it is, is like a post-installation measurement. And so, you know, those L10, L50 levels, they're going to be different from game to game. And so what we're, and again, the model is a model, it's the, what a acoustician put together, using the, the methods that they have available, and that's we, that's what we accepted as part of the application.
Thank you.
Now, I think we're doubling back on our sound discussion from the previous discussion, so I wonder if we can move on from that. Maybe look at the school district, is there anything you'd like to add to the, to the conversation here?
Thank you, Mayor, and city councilmembers. So there are just two quick things I'd like to add. One is just to reiterate that we believe that this stadium, this facility we're proposing at Jefferson High School, is within the intended uses for school zoning, and, and truly, we believe it's going to be what's good for our students and our families in Bloomington and in the Jefferson area. So that's one. I just want to reiterate, we really believe it's what's good for our community. And two, it's my understanding that Van Klaassen, the reputable company that's done our sound study, is going to be at the Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, and will be explaining more information at that time. That's all I have.
Very good, thank you. Questions for the Assistant Superintendent, Councilmember Nelson, and Councilmember Loman? Oh, no? Staff? A germane question?
Yes. Is, there going to be a public hearing at your meeting also?
At the Planning Commission meeting?
No, with the Planning Commission? It's, okay, fine, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, discussion, questions on this? Councilmember Loman?
I just had a quick question for staff, real quick. So mitigation, so let's say, let's just say that noise is an issue, couldn't one of the mitigation tactics be reduce crowd?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, I suppose it could be possible.
That's all I need, thanks.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. If this doesn't meet with the testing after the fact, the risk would be borne by the school district to do mitigation, turn it down, crowd size, other things, is that accurate? This is not a city risk, it's a school district risk that it doesn't perform, and they need to bring it into compliance with standards.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, councilmember, it would be, the school district would be violating city code.
Okay.
And so we would, of course, work with the school district to find, to try and bring them into compliance, but it would be their responsibility to mitigate.
Okay. And then one other possible mitigation that I would just throw out there, at the corner where there is the house, close by, there's actually a berm on the opposite side of there. There's also tree, boulevard trees protecting their house, I believe those are in the city boulevard there. With the excavation and the bleachers, could it be considered to regrade that, make it, and I think, I don't think your Clearview Triangle's impacted, because there's a separate turn lane there. But could they provide additional protection, because they're so close there, just to give themselves an extra buffer, if they so chose?
Certainly a possibility.
Okay. Last thing, and I don't want to go too far down this rabbit hole, it's been talked about, but there, there are concerns about renting the facility out, there are some environmental concerns with that. Just quickly, in the Planning Commission report under land use, it says it's a local facility not intended to be used for regional event purposes. Does that limit them in any way in terms of rentals and things like that?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, in, you know, we're definitely going into the range of what the Planning Commission will be reviewing, but what we have included in the recommended conditions is a concurrent use agreement, where the school district would enter an agreement with the city that they would not have significant events, such as the Activity Center and a home football game at the same time.
Thanks.
Councilmember Muah?
Thank you, Mayor. More just comments on my end. We had a lot of discussion with the Kennedy one, and I do want folks to understand, especially from my side, I have very young children right now, and their future is exactly what I'm thinking about. When it comes to this city, we are, my family is deeply invested in Bloomington. My wife's family has roots that go back to the 1800s here, when Bloomington was nothing but fields and woods, and people were starting, starting to farm here. And now my family is here to continue on that tradition, to make sure that our children have a future, a viable future here in Bloomington. And so it is not something that we, and I, take very lightly. All the points that we've talked about today, from the petitioners, from the applicants, are very, very valid. But it's up to us as a community to continue to work through the process, to, to come to an understanding, to support our future here. And so I do appreciate everyone coming and providing their testimony, providing their input, so we can continue to have this conversation moving forward. As far as it goes for this, for the Jefferson EAW, you know, my, my thoughts align deeply with the, the conversation we have with Kennedy, and I want to see this move forward into the Planning Commission phase of it.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Alessandro?
I don't have anything more to add from a, from a causality perspective in terms of the conditions that must be met, because I think that we are in the same position here, personally, for me, with noise, with lighting, with the conservation, with contamination. I will say, I, there, because we've gotten such rich information, and, and obviously people who are passionate about this issue have, have given us a lot of good insight into what we can do as a community to make our ordinances and, and other things more in line with what it would take to, you know, really comply with, whether that's Green Step Cities, or Starry Skies, or other things like that. I know we can't force the issue on the stadiums, but is it, and I'll throw this out here as something to consider, does this, do we as a council want to compile a list of some of these recommendations and hand them to the state, hand them to the, the school board and say, we really, really want you to consider doing some of these things, because it's in the best interest of the community, if we believe that? Again, can't force them, right? Don't have the, don't have the tools to, to make compliance happen regulatorily, speaking, if you will. But this isn't, this is a compilation of really important information, and something that I think we could do something useful with, and if that was at all possible, to, to have their architects and their engineers seriously consider some of these mitigation strategies as part of what they're doing. And then bring that, again, to the delight of not just the Planning Commission, but all of us who are eager to see these things put in place. That would be over and above the vote tonight, a recommendation I would highly recommend if we're interested. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Nelson was a half second before Councilmember Loman.
I'll be quick, my comments are virtually the same as they were for Kennedy. I just reiterate that I agree with regards to the parking, and I hope that the school can talk to that, to the Planning Commission of how they're going to get people to go park over there, because I do think that will be a challenge there, that they have to demonstrate that they can overcome and utilize that parking.
Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, if it's appropriate, I'd love to see Councilmember Alessandro's suggestions added in some format to the motion that I'm about to make here.
I hesitate to add it to the motion, but I think we can make that a staff direction. How about that? I, I don't-
I'm good with that, yeah, as long as you're good with that. Great, then I'll go ahead and make the motion here. I'll move a, a resolution adopting findings of fact in order denying petition for discretionary environmental assessment worksheet for the Bloomington Jefferson High School Stadium Improvement Project.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Muah, to approve a resolution adopting findings of fact in order denying petition for discretionary environmental assessment worksheet for the Bloomington Jefferson High School Stadium Improvement Project. Counsel, any further discussion on this? Councilmember Rivas?
I just need to make a comment. I'm, I'm venue here, I don't know as much as all of you do. I want to make a appeal to my colleagues here that highly speak about sustainability. The city called a couple of years ago, if I recall correctly, a, an emergency on regards to sustainability. However, we're not living up to any of that. So, that said, I will refrain from voting yes on this, I'm going to vote against it.
Thank you, councilmember. Any additional comments, counsel? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-1 with Councilmember Rivas in opposition. Thank you to the staff, thank you to our petitioners, thanks to the, the school district and the council for this discussion. I think we, we chewed this one up for, for the environmental assessment worksheet, and now, as we've talked about, this is just one step. I mean, there are more things to do here in terms of the, the site plan and the, and the final development plans for, for the, the stadium, so. Councilmember Carter?
I just was going to see if you wanted to mention that there is going to be a public hearing on Thursday, then.
Yes. There, there, as part of the Planning Commission, there will be a, a public hearing for that, for that proposal, so, there we go. Counsel, it is now 20 minutes before 10 o'clock, and we still have three things to get through, or three or four things to get through in our organizational business, so keep that in mind. We will start with item 5.1, a presentation on investing in our future, leveraging debt for essential capital projects. We have with us, of course, Lori Economy Schuler, to lead us all off on this.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. With me this evening is Elizabeth Bergman, she's a principal at Baker Tilly, and we'll get started as soon as the- Presentation is the way, the next slide, please. So our agenda this evening is quickly to go through a little bit on how this meets our Bloomington strategic plan, the funding sources, a little bit on just where we're at for 24 and 25, capital improvements and related debt issuance, a longer term look at 24 through 2030 on our capital, some ESG and social bond information, and some interest rates. Moving on- Moving on. So with the strategic plan, with the planned capital projects outlined in the presentation, we will be meeting the desired outcomes. In the strategic plan, we will keep neighbors connected. We would be continuing to be a welcoming committee, community. We would be improving the environment and human health and we would be addressing public safety needs. And of course, we would keep to a mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. Our funding sources, we have a number of funding sources that we utilize. Fees, internal service charges, special assessments, grants and other governmental funds, potentially the SAC charges that was at a previous council organizational meeting. For this evening, we are going to specifically talk about property taxes and bonds that we would be issuing that need property tax support. For 2024, we've had a number of activities that we've been working through council for the last year, plus on the charter bonds for Bryant and Treppa Parks. They've been performed before the council for different parts of the improvement where they're, hopefully the bids will be released soon and then we can schedule the dates for when we're going to sell the bonds. We anticipate that to be about $10.2 million. For the PIR bonds, you'll notice quite a low number there. In 2022, the council allowed us to, Elizabeth and I had been watching the market and we were noticing pressure to increase rates for interest out there. So with council's approval, we issued bonds for 2022 and 2023. The 22 amount was based off of actual bids and the 23 amount had been based off of what had been in the CIP. Then in fall of 22, council approved approximately four miles of projects versus in the CIP, we tend to have about five miles in there. So four miles were approved and then the bids came in last spring really nice. So we were able to not spend all of the 2023 bond proceeds. So we have approximately 3.9 million of unspent bond proceeds and we are using that to pay down the bonds that we would need to normally issue this fall. So with that, we're looking to be about 2.1 million for PMP versus in the eight million dollar range, so. And then this fall, we would be looking to issue our first sales tax bonds for BIG. And then the PIR bonds and the sales tax bonds would be on the same schedule of timing. We would issue the bonds or sell the bonds in October and close in November. And then on 2025 for the garage, a couple of years ago, we bought the land for that. We bought a building. And then in the last council meeting or two ago, the council approved the architect for the garage. So that is underway and looking to probably issue that debt early in 2025. The PIR bonds are what is listed in our CIP. And then in late 2025, we would also issue the sales tax bonds for the Health and Wellness Center. And then moving on to a little bit longer look, you'll see the 24 and 25. And then in 26, we have, in the blue area, we have Dwan and then the fire stations and then parks. Parks are on every other year. You've seen in the CIP for a number of years, Dwan. They both need golf course improvements and the building. Other park improvements and then the fire stations. On the PIR side, that's been out there consistently since early 1990s. And I just want to go back in history a little bit. Six years ago in the spring of 2018, some of you might remember that we did that and it might not seem that long ago, but it was 2018. Because I believe Councilmember Nelson was part of that and that's, he started with the city in 2018, so I knew what date I could look for. So when we talked over at Public Works that evening, it was just on the blue area. It wasn't the purple area for Public Works, it was just the blue area. Parks were 2 million every other year. All the fire stations were less than 10 million and the garage was less than 20 million. We've pushed the timing of these out and with that pushing, we increased the prices. So back then, when we looked at these, we also have COVID inflation that hasn't dropped materials back to anywhere near normal. So currently we have parks based off of more of the Parkmaster Plan. When we're looking at the blue area back then, we were looking at a one to one and a half percent tax levy with general range back then, or not now, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in also?
Please do.
I think that we also had one debt issue back then that came in at 1.86% or so, which is another factor that we have to consider is that the cost of issuances far beyond what it was back when we first started talking about this.
Yep, even in 2022, when we did that bond issue for two years of PMP, it was in the low twos. We are in the neighborhood of high three to mid fours for a tax exempt bond, depending on the day. Elizabeth will go more into that. So then, you've seen this huge piece broken up for many years. So I just wanted to get you through what this kind of looks like. So if we focus first on the blue graph there, you can see, I'm going to push now. Oh, it doesn't even, you can see, if the audience is looking for 2025, the PMP block there. If anyone can see that there, otherwise I don't know if the cursor can. There it is, the cursor on 2025 for the blue, you can see where the dip to 2.1 million is on the blue block for PMP. And then the slow, steady inflation, we're inflating PMP costs by year at three and a half percent. Normal range of inflation on material costs. Then I'll jump to the yellow, which is fire state, there's charter bonds. We've issued a couple charter bonds and now we're going to issue our next one. And you can see in 2025 where it's going to impact the 25 levy, it increasing. And then, and then you can slowly see that we are issuing, that same block is going to be the same for two years in a row and then increase, two years in a row, it increase. And then the red block, you can see when we're adding our fire station. The next fire station is going to be added in 26, which will impact the 27 levy. Another one will be built in 27, impacting the 28 levy. We're going to skip a year and then you have 29. We're going to add another one and it will impact the 31. So you see the fire stations being added. The garage, the green block will remain the same size the entire duration of the maturity. So there's that. And then the black box on the bottom is where we've estimated a range of what we would need to increase the tax levy by to pay for these capital projects. So the first one up are the parks and depending on how the final levy for 2025 is, we would need anywhere between three quarters of a percent to a percent and a quarter. For the garage, which is that big bump for 20, built in 20, you know, bond issued in 25 for 26, depending again on the levies, which none of us have that mirror of magic ball. Anywhere between three to three and a half is what we would need to increase for the garage. So it goes on. So this is where we've moved things out on the calendar for many, many years. And this is compacting it over the next six. So these are just fuel for thoughts as we're approaching the levy and the season and things out there. We can slow any of this down, but again, you know, it's pushing Dwan out another year, fire stations out more years. These are essential city services and essential city bids, things. So think about those. And I'm going to turn this over to Elizabeth to talk, well, I think I got a couple more.
I think so too, but I wasn't sure I was going with you.
I'm going on social bonds now, something fun. So I think most of you have been to conferences or will be at conferences where you hear the acronym ESG, environmental, social and governmental. Our credit rating agencies have started adding more and more to what we need to put in our official documents on ESG. GFOA has best practices for us to watch and follow. But over conferences over a number of years, I've gathered data and Brianna and I worked on this to try to really make it about us. So we can issue under environmental like social or if we're buying a lot of vehicles underneath there, water. We did issue a green bond a couple of years ago in 2019. We're looking to issue a social bond for the park bonds. And if you look at governance, you will see a lot of categories there that are really compliance or finance or about you guys as government, how we regulatory the city. Governance is where we score the highest with our credit rating agencies. So I just want to thank you and all the staff that help us maintain that governance. So in our social bond framework, as soon as it gets validated by Kestrel, it has four main components, how we're going to use the proceeds, how the project's going to be evaluated and selected, how we're going to manage the proceeds and then reporting. So hopefully we will have a social bond that we will issue this summer. And now I can turn it over to Elizabeth.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Brugge. Lori, before you turn it over to Elizabeth, you want to talk about the benefit of the ESGs, the social bonds and why we're interested in having our debt issuance be sort of categorized in that manner?
I would say 14 months ago, a city manager was at a National League of Cities meeting in Washington DC and he saw a presentation on municipal bonding and racial equity. And he texted Faith and I that Sunday afternoon. And we got going on adding two more vendors to our certificates of deposit list, BIPOC, BIPOC financial institutions. And then we put four applications into Public Finance Initiative for, and the council approved the resolution to apply for the grants for that. We won a $50,000 grant that we were able to spend on some of the bond issuance costs related to the park board, park bonds. We were part of a cohort with eight other locations, Bloomington being the baby. So the next largest city was St. Paul Port Authority mixture. Then we had Chicago, Atlanta, Dallas, King County, and then the Nevada State Bond and then the Water District of California. So we were the baby. And so where the emphasis of small governments and midsize and small can do this, that we can put in our preliminary or offering documents and our other documents, more racial equity information and other cities can do the same. They just need to document, whether they have a social bond or not, they can actually put more in there. And so social to me is just emphasizing that we are putting in inclusive park, we're including more racial equity work and all of the stuff the city does is emphasized within the document.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, the reason I asked Lori to address that, not because I wanted you to.
I can talk about it.
Say that, you know, Jamie went to the NLC conference. When people ask about the benefits of these conferences, we actually do learn things and then we bring them back and we incorporate them. But that's not the reason. The fact is that ESG bonds are really gaining momentum in the marketplace. And there are specific investors and investment groups that are interested in placing their funds with, they're philosophically aligning is what's happening, right? And so the more that we can document that we are doing things consistent with the philosophy of ESG investors, the more competitive we're going to be in the marketplace. And that drives better rates when people are bidding on our debt. So there's a financial, there is a financial and economic benefit for us to do the work that we're doing and this is one of the ways that we can demonstrate it. So, and hats off to you and to Faith and everybody else that worked on making sure that we get to this point.
And now, once you sell it, it's up to Elizabeth to really get us good rates.
Well, I was just going to say, it's consistent with one of the things I'm going to talk about, which is Bloomington's three triple A's. So it's about the market reputation. The social bond, the green bond, the market's still trying to figure that out. And actually Lori and I had, went to a number of meetings and phone calls with investors talking about that. And I think increasingly it's, the feedback we're getting is it's about really being perceived as an active issuer, somebody who's following the market, who's giving the market the information they want. So it's almost, if you're not doing it, you're falling behind as much as anything. So I think it's really, I think it's really progressive of Bloomington and really, and being on the front end. And having issued that green bond, what was it, 2018, I think, maybe, or maybe, I can't remember which year.
18.
Okay, we can say 18, all right. Well, I wanted to give a little context around Bloomington and sort of where you sit within the market. I'm going to give you some context and then I'm going to talk about where the market is now and where we think it is going forward. And given the hour, I'm going to be relatively brief, but happy to answer questions. So the first thing I wanted to show is this slide here, which shows your issues going back to 2011. It's your, all of your public debt and the different interest rates on each of the issues and then looking at an average cost. So just that dotted line is kind of where you average out all the public issues. And one of the points I wanted to make Lori already addressed was in 2022, looking forward at the market and thinking about the city's needs and what had been determined, you all made a very wise choice, which was to sell those two years of borrowing needs in 2022 at a cost that's below your average and certainly below what we think you will, you'll be selling at the end of the year. You can see also that, that while there's peaks and valleys, you know, your average cost is around 2.75 and as an annual issuer, you get a benefit from that. So any given year, you might have a really low rate or less favorable rate, but going to the market annually allows you to sample that and not fixate on any given year. The next slide here does quantify the benefit of those three triple A's. Obviously, there's one thing that's great about the three triple A's and that's bragging rights. It's very few cities across the country that can do that. But you can actually see the market impact here as well. You know, the triple A and the reward you're getting there is really about the market recognizing the management and fiscal discipline that the city has put in place. So if you look at this slides a little bit, there's a lot going on. So let me just take a second to explain to you. The zero line is basically what a triple A borrower can be at. You're not at 0%, but that's the triple A. And if you are in the yellow line, which is a double A issuer, that's how many basis points more you, your borrowing cost would be than being a triple A. So a double A averages about five, five basis points. Single A, 23, and then the triple B, which is still an investment grade credit quality, but many municipal issuers sit at that level. It can be up to 140 basis points difference there. But, but you can just see the benefit that you're getting of having five basis points cheaper on every, well, not every deal, but on average on your deals, which over time adds up to quite a bit of money. So it's a recognition and it's a point of pride, but it's also a financial benefit. This next slide talks a little bit about where the municipal market is now. On the first, on the left-hand side, what we've got are municipal rates as of May 28th. And you can see there that those gray bars reflect the minimum and maximum of interest rates since 1993, when the MMD, the municipal market data indexed began being recorded. You can see the average are the black bars across the way and where we are right now is the teal. So one of the things that's very interesting is usually the, the cost of borrowing gets more expensive the further out you get. So it's a normalized yield curve, but right. But right now, you can see if you're borrowing for one year, you're at 3.36%. Whereas if you're borrowing for 10 years, you're just over 3%. That's called an inverted yield curve. It happens when economic, the economic environment is uncertain, and investors are, are looking for a reward and expecting that short, or the interest rates will go down. So that's where we've been for a while. You can see overall, with the exception of the inversion, we're about in the average. So while it feels like interest rates have been, you know, rising and feel higher than they have been, it's because they've been so incredibly low for any number of years here. And then on the right, this graph shows a little bit about the benefit of being able to issue tax-exempt debt. So the coral color, that's official Baker Tilly color there, that's coral. In case you want to call it orange or anything like that, it's coral. The coral line is well above the teal line, and that is the difference between a tax-exempt and a taxable rate. So that's the benefit you get for tax-exempt borrowing. You can see it's quite wide right now, and there are a couple of things that are, are happening there. One is that as interest rates are higher, the spread widens. It kind of makes sense when your interest rates are at 0.5%, it's kind of hard to have a big spread. And the other thing that's interesting about that is as the Fed is making interest rate adjustments, there's a little less of a one-to-one sort of correlation as the Fed makes adjustments because there is so much slack between the two. So it may be that the Fed might ratchet up interest rates a little bit, and the municipal rate will kind of stay the same. And we've seen the municipal rate over the last couple of weeks go up. But the, when they're further apart, there's more opportunity for the Fed, for the Fed rate and the, and the municipal rates to be a little, a little separate in their movement. So where do interest rates go from here? Obviously, you know, I can't tell you the answer, because if I could, you know, the classic line, I wouldn't be here, I'd be doing something else. But, you know, a couple of important drivers on interest rates, as I'm sure you all know, unemployment, inflation, and then market supply. So we're all watching to see what's happening in the economy with unemployment and, and inflation. And the top graph here is the personal consumer, consumption expenditure. And that is a, a consumer-based inflation metric. It's really about what consumers are doing. And you can see that it has been exceptionally high over 22 and 23, you know, up in the 4% or 5%. And it has tapered off in recent months. And the year, year, year number as of the end of, the end of May was 2.8%. So, still pretty high as compared to what the Fed is targeting, which is a 2% inflation index. So that sort of suggests that right now, we're not going to see inflation rates, you know, rates come down, interest rates, not inflation rates. And then the same is below is the, is non-farm payrolls. So again, we see that normalizing, we've added about 300,000 jobs to the economy. In the most recent report, so job creation is slowing, but still not slowing to a point that we think interest rates are going down. It's, it's also interesting to know that the Fed futures, the market sort of has indicators of where interest rates are going. And then for September, they're saying 50, 50% chance, you know, flip of a coin about whether or not interest rates will go down. The president of the Minneapolis Fed had an interview over the weekend talking about what he thought was happening with interest rates. And he said, higher, longer, probably no cuts this year. But he's one, one voice, but he's from Minnesota, so I thought maybe we, we'd, we'd share his opinion. So, what did you say? Yeah. So, that's what I have, and happy to take questions.
Mr. Brugge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Just as a way of wrapping this up in a tidy little bow for you. You know, the reason we do this, as Lori alluded at the beginning, is when we start out our budget conversation, we want to make sure that you have the full picture of what we're looking at, not just on the operating side. But, you know, what we're doing in terms of community investment right now is significant. And so we want to make sure that you understand the consequences of the decisions that you're making. The other thing that I, I want to specifically do is commend Lori, because not many cities have the type of modeling that we do or employ this to the extent that we do. We found out during this legislative session, when we were working on some language that concerned us, that we're one of the few cities that has a 10-year CIP. Many cities have a three-year or a five-year CIP, that's not unusual. But to have a 10-year CIP that also then connects back to a long-term debt model is unique. And so Lori and her team get a lot of credit for that. And thank you to Elizabeth for the support that you provide in that.
But none of, none of our customers have this.
Right, so Lori.
I was going to validate it, yeah.
Lori built the debt model, and it took two meetings for me to fully grasp how she put it all together. And it's, it's impressive. And it's just another example of where I think that Bloomington is really demonstrating leadership in, in how we approach things. And it's why we keep getting those triple, triple A ratings, is because they look at the financial management of the organization. And this is another indication of, of why it is the way it is.
Council questions? Council member De La Sandra?
I don't have a question, I just have a quick comment, and I just want to thank you for including the ESG stuff. I work with a lot of organizations that, you know, their requirement as law firms are to now include this. Because their customers are now being asked as they either go for funding or they go to their public here, you know, their public meetings and things like that, right? And of course, the UN, especially if they have global operations, the UN has the SDG goals, right? Very similar to ESGs. Yep, yes, exactly. And so everyone has to figure out, like, which of them are they, you know, and all that, and how they put that together. So the fact that normally, you know, municipal municipalities, like government is usually behind the times on that, even though the government creates the regulation, whatever. I, I just want to say thank you very much for pulling that together and letting me know that, that is something that we're working on. I did not know that it had kind of creeped into the municipal markets, but it makes sense that it would. And because those folks need it for their folks, et cetera, et cetera. So thanks very much for including that, it was very enlightening. And I'm happy to talk offline about that, because I'll nerd out with you on it. Thank you.
Council member Lowman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I do remember sitting, well, wasn't here in 2018, it was someplace else. But if we were to take a, you know, a time travel to 2028 and look at, at this, this graph, and we were to look back in terms of what you would suggest that we would have done, would you have any suggestions from, from that perspective in terms of, you know, maybe smoothing this out at all? Any, any advice you'd give us? I'll just leave it at that, because I, I have a lot more questions, but I'm just trying to just pick one, one question.
Mayor, council member Lowman, for example, the garage was out there in 2016. It's going to be nine years before we issue bonds for it. It's just, we've just moved the time, and the price really increased. It's time. I mean.
Council additional questions? Council member Muah.
Thank you, Mayor. Not really question, just comments. Looking at this, there are a lot of emotions that go through it. Right? You know, I'm.
Council member Muah, it's hard to put together.
Yes, and I appreciate all the work that you do.
As a finance officer, it's hard to put together.
Right, it's not towards you, it's, it's kind of where we are today, right? There's been a lot of can kicking. And we can see that we need to invest in Bloomington. But also, there's the realities that we have to face the issues that are going today, where inflation is high. People can't keep up, it costs a hundred bucks to go buy eggs and milk and bread at the store. And so how do we continue to invest in Bloomington while not continuing to kick the can down the road? Right, it's where do we take a stand? Where do we work with the residents to get the understanding that our city, while we built a great city, is just old, and we need to rebuild it so that we can last another 60, 70 years? And so there's a lot of emotions that go into it, it's not something that I personally take lightly. And I'm looking forward to the conversation that we're going to have, because it's, it's, it's a big mountain coming that we're climbing.
Anything else, council? Very good, thank you much. Thanks for sticking it out with us late tonight. And speaking of late night, item 5.2 on our agenda is the solid waste rate study presentation. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Good evening, thanks for having us here this evening. So we are here tonight to discuss our solid waste rate study. My name is Laura Horner, I'm the city's solid waste program coordinator. Here tonight with Ellen Biellas, our deputy director of public works, and Carl Keel, the director of public works. Also joining us virtually are our consultants, Dr. Lisa Skumatz and Ann Gibbs. We might want to just pause to make sure they have audio before we get going. I think I saw Lisa on there. Oh, Lisa, I think we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great. And we'll go ahead and get started. So as I mentioned, we're here tonight to review our solid waste rate study. Council may recall that we received direction from city council back in 2023, as well as from the Sustainability Commission to conduct a rate study. The council was interested in this for several different reasons. Are we getting them?
I think we're trying to get the presentation.
Technical difficulties? Okay. No problem. The first of the kind of reasons really is about just the rising cost of garbage disposal. As that cost continues to increase, the city is trying to keep our solid waste rates low for our residents. And we can do that while motivating residents to reduce waste, recycle, and compost more by looking at the structure of our garbage rates. For a little bit more background on the costs of garbage, currently, our residential garbage is processed at the Hennepin Energy Recovery Center, also known as HERC, where it is incinerated to produce electricity. And that county subsidized disposal cost at HERC has increased 34% in the last five years, from $58 a ton in 2019 to $78 a ton in 2024. So we know that those costs are only continuing to increase. We, the, the cost of landfill has also increased even more significantly due to limited landfilling space. So we really want to do what we can to control the costs of garbage. We know that, you know, the cost to recycle and, and compost also increases as well, but it's just not at that same rate as garbage. So the, the other reason is we know that our garbage residentially is taxed fairly heavily by both the county and the state. And recycling and composting is not taxed. So there's a lot of good reasons for us to continue to divert that waste for just the cost savings alone for our residents. And really, that second reason is the environmental benefits. Not only is it more cost-effective, it's also environmentally preferable to reduce the amount of waste that residents are generating. We know that continuing to divert waste is one of the city's strategic priorities. And also, in light of recent conversations regarding HERC, we know that the, the county also has a lot of interest in doing everything that we can to really reduce the amount of waste that's produced. Kind of in the hopes of shutting down that facility. So it's really become a pressing issue. We know that the county is going to have a lot more programs for the city to be implementing related to reducing waste. And lastly, just for our, our residents in general, we have heard interest from the council to help find a way that we can reduce, reduce our rates for small generators of waste. We know that a large majority of the households in Bloomington are single-family, you know, one, one or two people living in those homes that do not generate a lot of waste, and several do live on fixed incomes. So I know that we here in council hears a lot from residents on fixed incomes that would like to find a way to reduce their garbage bills. So that's just to frame it for you, kind of why we're here, what the, what the urgency was related to the study. Briefly, before we go into the information from Sarah, I want to just set a little bit of background related to how we currently set our rates. So for our garbage program, what we charge residents for garbage service is very reflective of exactly what the haulers charge us for service. We add a small administrative fee on that, and then a tax and fee from the county and state. So the haulers do, residents can choose between the small, medium, and large cart. And there is a little difference in cost there from what the haulers charge, that's required by state law. But we know that that increase in cost between, between the cart sizes is very minimal, and it's not really likely to influence behavior, which, which we'll go into later. So that's our garbage rates. And then for recycling and organics, we know that all residents do pay for recycling and organics, kind of regardless of their use and participation in the program. Everyone pays that same amount for both of those services. You could get three recycling carts if you wanted to, and it's still going to cost you that same rate for the, so there's always in that motivation to put as much as you can in those carts. And then very briefly about our process, we really start the rate-setting process right about now, when we first propose our preliminary budgets in June. We do a detailed conversation with the council in October where we will review rates. And then there's a public hearing in November, and those rates are ultimately adopted as part of the council's budget process. So we will continue to have opportunities with council to review the rates as well. So, so with that, I will turn it over to Lisa, Lisa Skumatz with Sarah. We know that, that really the trick to operating a successful pay-as-you-throw program is to find that sweet spot of encouraging the waste reduction, but also making sure that we are bringing in enough revenue to operate this program. So we have really relied on their expertise in some really detailed models that Lisa will review. Sarah has conducted studies related to pay-as-you-throw across the country. They frequently consult with, with the US EPA to make recommendations on these sorts of programs, so we're really lucky to have them. And I will turn it over to Lisa for the presentation.
Thanks very much. I'm assuming you can still hear me?
We can.
Okay, thanks for that introduction, that kind introduction, Laura. And the topic of solid waste rates can be complex, but we're going to be focusing on key concepts and results for high-level direction from the council. Next slide. So why is the city considering pay-as-you-throw rates? It's because the city wants to increase recycling and organics diversion and reduce trash. And pay-as-you-throw has been found to be the most effective and most cost-effective way to achieve that goal. If you think about it, pay-as-you-throw doesn't mean new trucks. Next slide. Instead, the way it works is it's a different billing, different kind of billing system. You have a higher bill if you opt to put, to use more trash service, and a lower bill if you use less trash service. And that pocketbook incentive provides you an incentive for a smaller trash can by removing recycling and organics and putting them in the programs that Laura just talked about. It's, and so that's, that's kind of how it works. It's mainly a change in billing. There's strong evidence that it works. The statistical work has shown that pay-as-you-throw leads to 17% less trash in the residential waste stream. About a third of it goes to recycling, about a third of it goes to organics, and a third of it goes to source reduction or waste prevention, buying more carefully, using, you know, bringing more things to goodwill, things like that, things that end up not in the landfill at all. And therefore are no cost to the city because it's not being collected at all anymore. The analysis shows that pay-as-you-throw is the most cost-effective of more than 15 options that have been modeled as, as possibilities for cities to undertake to try to increase recycling and diversion. But all pay-as-you-throw systems are not the same. On the right-hand side, we're talking about best practices for strong pay-as-you-throw. And there are several features that are required. You need to have strong rate incentives. As Laura mentioned, there's a sweet spot in, in sort of the goals we're trying to achieve. But what we also found is that there's a sweet spot in the rate incentive that actually causes people to change their behavior. You don't get a lot more recycling by doubling, doubling costs or tripling or, you know, charging more than, than twice as much or twice the amount of service. But you do get strong, but you also don't get strong recycling if you only charge, say, 10% or 20% more for that extra can of service. The sweet spot is people change behavior, they recycle more, if that extra can costs about 50 to 80% more than the first can. So that, we're trying to provide strong enough rate incentives to, to cause a difference and to cause that change in behavior. You also need to not say, okay, your next trash can is going to cost more, but good luck figuring out what to do with it. You need to have convenient recycling opportunities for them to use for a productive new system. You need to have small can or small service. You need to have small can or small service options for small disposers to provide them incentives and realistic things to order them to save money. And minimal barriers to recycling. You need to have the kind of strong outreach program that the city already has. And you need to also make sure that you evaluate how the program is doing on a routine basis so that it can keep up its strong performance. Next slide. We assessed Bloomington's current solid waste program and made some comparisons to try to figure, against best practices, to figure out where was there room to grow? Where was there room to improve? The city already has a strong program. They already have a Pay as You Throw system. So we're not starting from ground zero. We're not trying to introduce a new program. You have strong optimized collection and diversion programs already. You already have weekly collection of food waste. You have the option for weekly collection of yard waste. You have the option for every, you have every other week recycling, and you have trash collection. Now, you might think that every other week recycling isn't as good as weekly recycling. But as it turns out, every other week recycling is actually optimal because if you went to weekly recycling, you would only gain about 1 to 3 percentage points more recycling, but it would cost you twice as much. It turns out that those extra tons cost you, what, five times as much as the cost of the tons from every other week collection. So you gain a little and you cost a lot. So it's a really well-optimized system as it currently exists. You've got a network of quality supporting services, meaning your system for collection of extras when there's overflow, for bulky items and so on and so forth. So that's a well-integrated system as well. And you have a really strong engagement, customer engagement system, which is really important, making sure that customers understand what you're doing, why you're doing it, how they can make it work for them, and that sort of thing. Those things are all conclusions that it's a good base system that has some easy, potentially easy refinements that could be done to make it a stronger and more, and higher performing system. The things that we see in particular are, yes, you have currently Pay as You Throw, but it's not in that sweet spot of price incentive. It's much lower than that. Depending on how you measure it, it's only 18 to 34% for twice as much service, not 50 to 80% more for twice as much service. So that's an area for improvement. Another option, another thing to look at is the way that you currently charge. Currently, you have a base fee for some services that covering the recycling and the food waste program. And then the extra, and then the trash options, set the trash amount off as a separate part of it. That can provide some less optimal signals than a system where everything is embedded. So we will look at that as well. You have service options. You have service options to as low as about 2 gallons of service. But many other cities have a smaller, have a smaller service option. That's something we wanted to also look for, a reward for those strong recyclers in your community. So these provide some of the clear choices that we can consider for increasing diversion in Bloomington. Next slide. There's a lot to model for this system. Next slide. There's a lot to model for this system. And we wanted to make sure that we had a model that well-reflected Bloomington. So we did some data collection that was really important to the successful modeling of the program. We did two major efforts. One of them was a set-out survey. And that's, that is where people go out in the field and they weigh. And they study how full they are, the volume. And they did that for 514 random households around the city to be able to well represent the city. And we designed it, the staff, the city conducted, and we analyzed it. It was a nice joint effort. We also did a customer survey. And we had two parts to that customer survey. One was a representative survey, where specific households were requested to respond, and they represented the city statistically. And that was 100 respondents. We also had it be an open survey. And that open survey, 760 people responded to the notice that was provided in like the newsletter, the website, and so on. But that's not generally representative. What we usually find is that people that respond to an open survey are those who are very interested. It's more useful data on usage of, you know, of the different programs, on support, and on their likelihood of undertaking certain changes under the new system. We used it to localize our model with Bloomington data. Next slide. So we had some very important findings from the setup survey and the data collection efforts from the survey. And one is, first, people are only using about half of the amount of service they're paying for. The average cart is just a little over half-full. So even without behavior change, people shift down in container sizes. Second, about more than half of the houses could divert more food scraps that are currently going into their garbage can. And only about 30% of the households use the organics program. Third, 40% of households could divert more yard waste. And fourth, 95% say their recycling containers are more than half-full. And if we end up switching to a system that's going to encourage more recycling, then that's going to start to become a capacity issue. 65% had the 65-gallon rather than the 95-gallon cart. That is likely something that's going to have to change for a successful new program. Also, from the survey, we got their interest in moving to a smaller cart. And we found that more than half were interested in switching to a garbage, a smaller garbage cart if they were able to save money. And more than a third of the households think that they might be able to work with that every other week garbage service to get that smaller garbage service level. Next slide. We also conducted, we did a lot of modeling work, and we conducted more than 70 scenarios in modeling these various features I talked about, including, you know, the incentives, the financial incentives being between 60. And another model, other models measured, estimated at 75% for twice as much service. So that sweet spot, 50 to 80%, we measured a 60% rate incentive and a 75% rate incentive for double the service. We also considered a smaller trash option provided by having every other week service of that smallest trash container. We considered, we modeled options for how these rates are paid. Is it all-in? So that everything is through the rate can? Or do we have a two-part rate like you have currently, where there's a base fee and then a separate part for the cans? And finally, we also considered universal delivery of organics and yard waste, much as you already do for recycling right now. So those were, those constituted, those and some other options constitute 70 scenarios. And we've kind of, we worked with staff and narrowed down the scenarios for consideration, those around having a smaller trash cart or cart size, I mean, cart service level. So by providing an every-other-week service for that small cart. And then the two options for rate incentives, both moderate and aggressive. We'll see the results of those models coming up. Next slide. But to understand the results, it's really important to look at the current and the proposed rate systems. On the left-hand side, we see what the current system looks like. You have a 30, 60, 90-gallon cart sort of choice in that range, where the second one is twice as big as the first level, and the third one is three times as big as the cart level. Well, it turns out that under your current system, about a quarter of the people are on the smallest cart. About almost half of the people are on the mid-size. And about a third of the people are on the largest cart. So a lot of people are putting out, or have the potential to put out a lot of trash. And they're only paying $4 more for that, you know, extra-large cart than they are for that, for that medium-sized cart. That's the way your current system works. So a pretty modest rate incentive. On the right-hand side is the new system that we're looking at based on these kind of models. And for the, what we find there is that instead of 22%, 45%, and 32% on those different cart levels, instead, the combination of the two smallest carts, that every-other-week one and the smallest cart, is more like 70% of the households. And then we only have 20% and 10% left on those higher service levels, where we're charging quite a bit more, 60 to 75% more for the 65, and a large increase also for the 95-gallon cart. Now, that might sound like something that's going to lead to some pretty big rate shock with these big changes. But in fact, rates are not equal to bills. Bills are the combination of the rates you're charging by the carts for each cart and their choice of what size cart they think they need. And what we see is that, you know, what we model and what we see in every community we work with is that when you change the rates, when you provide revised incentives and convenient recycling, people move from larger carts to smaller carts. Now, you have the double whammy. They can move it even without changes in behavior because the carts are only half-full currently. So people will definitely, with a rate incentive, be moving from the largest cart to the middle and small, from the middle to the small, and so on and so forth. So that, that leads to, to, instead of the rate shock you might get by looking strictly at rates, the combination of rates and choices are the change in bills. And we'll show you coming up that the bill increases are not nearly what we're talking about in terms of rate increases. Next slide. So for the aspect of this work, we get into a little bit more specifics. And I'm going to ask for a little bit of your forbearance as I explain what the different columns are about. So the different columns first give you the status quo. That green-headed column is, is the status quo system that we have now. And we're comparing all the rates that we're talking about in this new modeling work to the status quo, what people are paying now. The next two bars that are blue, those are talking about a moderate and aggressive rate incentive, the 60 and 75% rate incentive, under a system where we, where we do not have the smallest cart option that we're talking about. And the last one, the orange ones, are the moderate and aggressive incentive with the option for another, for a small garbage service level. Now, let's first look at the bottom column, that yellow column. That yellow column tells us how much extra diversion we're going to get. And you'll notice that we currently have 39% diversion. But in fact, all of these options provide between about 10 and 15% more diversion, a big increase, 10 percentage points more diversion. So that's, so every option in this list shows substantial increase in diversion. Next slide. The next thing that we want to look at is what's happening with the average bills. Anything in blue is something that's a savings. And what we find here is that the, that the average bills actually go down in all of these scenarios. And why is that? The average customer's bill is lower under this new program? And it's strictly because of the structure of the trash collection contracts that you have now. You'll notice that those, that many people were moving from large cans to small cans. Well, the garbage contract that you have now charges the city less for small can, collection of small cans than for large cans. So as those people migrate downward, your costs go down, and those costs that you can reflect to the households go down as well. And you can see that we're talking about paying, you know, in the double digits less. Next slide. This row lets us look at what happens to people's individual bills. Because we don't only care what the average customer is doing, but the household cares what the household is facing. And this is what's happening to the household bills compared to what they're paying now. So this row reflects what happens to the households that choose to change their cart size, move down in cart sizes, partly from the fact that their carts aren't full, trash carts aren't full, and partly from the fact that they're doing more recycling and waste diversion. And what we see here is a change in, a reduction in, for people who want to switch down, we can see double-digit changes, reductions in their trash bills if they're willing to move down in cart size. So rate shock is not what's happening even with rate increases on individual can sizes. Next slide. Finally, remember I said, you know, bills are a combination of choice of behavior and the rates? Well, this is the group of people who choose not to change their cart size and don't do more recycling and that sort of thing, or may already be filling it up and have less, have less room to flex. The, here, we're seeing that, that they are, there aren't very many, as many blue colors because some of these people, many of the people are paying a higher rate. And the higher rate, the places that people are most affected is, you have less of a savings if you go with the aggressive rate incentive under either of the options, the blue or the orange. And also, with an every-other-week small garbage service, you're also paying, you tend to pay more. There's a higher rate associated with that, that service because it's sort of a more ratcheted rate. And it's also, you're providing savings for that small cart, which gets sort of filtered up and higher, and other rates have to pay a little bit more. So that's kind of how the systems would work. So there is, there are higher rates, but not necessarily rate shock for the vast majority of customers. Next slide. As part of the work, we don't, didn't only look at the diversion rates you saw before or the rate shock potential that you saw just before, but also we're looking at sort of revenue recovery and other risk factors. And so three of the risk factors that we were looking at were aggressive rate incentives versus moderate rate incentives. With moderate rate incentives, you, you do have a lower revenue risk as that label on that second column shows, but you also reduce the waste diversion that's going to happen. The second option is whether or not you provide an every-other-week service option, that lower service option. And here, you have a lower revenue risk if you don't have that collection, if you don't provide that more subsidized, that lower-cost rate option. But you have less greenhouse gas emissions. You have less reduction in trash. And you also reduce the customer options. Thirdly, you can do kind of an opt-out of service where you aggressively say, hey, everybody's pretty much going to need new cans. We expect you to all go down in size. So kind of let us know if you don't need to change, pretty much. So that's kind of an opt-out of, and pretty heavy-handed knowledge and outreach about that changing cans. The middle one is instead saying, it's kind of opt-in. Hey, we think you might want to relook at your service, and let us know if you need a cart size change. That second option definitely lowers the revenue risk, but you end up with a much slower uptake of new carts, which is sort of, in some ways, a smoother operation perhaps or implementation. But it also means that your switch to higher diversion rates will be much slower and so on. We looked at other risk elements as well, contract conditions, costs, carts, and that sort of thing. But the biggest thing that we looked at a lot was container shifts and how reliable those shifts were to lower, were to different-sized carts. That was key. We used data from three different sources to try to come to a conservative estimate, a low-risk estimate of those, of those levels. Next slide. A number of questions are commonly asked about these kinds of new systems, and we've considered a variety of issues here. What about weekly recycling? Well, we kind of talked about that a moment ago. It's much, it only gets you a little bit more recycling at much higher cost. Will it increase illegal dumping? Well, there's very little data on the actual illegal dumping, Well, there's very little data on the actual illegal dumping, but there's a fair bit of data. Um, we've done surveys of, of hundreds of communities that went to pay as you throw. And what we found was that maybe twenty percent of the households said that maybe for about three months, they had a little bit of an increase, a surge in, in, um, pays, in, uh, illegal dumping, but that was largely from communities that went from no pay as you throw to pay as you throw. You're merely changing the rates. So I suspect that your, uh, risk will be lower, considerably lower than those communities that haven't already made that change. Will this increase contamination in the recycling streams? Well, um, uh, there are sort of, this all is a much bigger issue than something that's only due to pay as you throw. I mean, it, as you know, the whole issue of contamination has been a, a big nationwide issue. But I, but we haven't seen statistics, statistical information that shows us that there is a, a relationship, but it doesn't mean that you shouldn't be monitoring what's happening at the recycling center and you certainly should do, you know, um, do oops tags, uh, programs as well out on the street to remind people to keep it clean. What about the impact on large families? That's always a, that's, uh, very much a concern by people, but, you know, look at the fact that large families pay more for more water or the more showers and more, you know, all the rest of that's the water usage that comes from a larger family. And for, for pay as you throw, they have a strong ability to reduce the amount of trash they're putting out through more recycling, through composting, through joining the yard waste and other programs and so on. And maybe turn the issue around. Is it fair that, uh, you know, for small, let's say, you know, retired, single people on a fixed income or something, to be paying, you know, to, to be paying more and, you know, shouldn't, shouldn't they have an opportunity to save? And these things are very related. So, um, but we can, if, if the issue is more about low income, we can discuss low income issues and options and the way that cities address that, um, as well if that, if that's an important question. Other issues, you know, extras and order, um, odors, extras we're proposing to be dealt with about the same way they are now where it's already, uh, there's already a way to handle parties, you know, uh, holidays and so on and so forth through an extra fee or overflows and so on. Um, odors, people were worrying about it because of the potential for an every other week service, but we're not, it's an optional service and, uh, people, no one's forced to use an every other week service. And if you're going to have something that's odorful in the trash, that you might not choose that every other week service option. Um, what about sharing carts? That does not work well with a pay as you throw system. The concept is you're responsible for your waste and if you put out more trash, you pay more. In fact, in most communities we work with, the first thing we have to do is, is sort of look at how, at, at reducing options for sharing carts and making households responsible for households' waste. But we can also talk about that if there's an issue associated with that. Next slide. We've also worked closely with staff in the, you know, solid waste and public works department closely on, on what needs to happen to make this system work, but we have also worked with all the different departments recognized here, um, to make sure that they're all prepared for the next steps and we all are working together to figure out exactly who, who needs to do what. And so, um, when it's implemented, there, there are a number of things that need to happen, which are all listed on this, in this, there are, many of them are listed on this slide and that's across many departments. So Laura, back to you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lisa, for that information. Um, so I think at this point, we wanted to open it up to council discussion and hopefully get a little, um, feedback and direction from the council regarding the results of this study, some of the scenarios that we've presented. To start with, I did want to note, we have been working with the sustainability commission as well. They received this presentation in May. Um, we had a good discussion with the sustainability commission regarding the different options. Um, and their recommendation, as noted on the screen here, was for the city to pursue more of the, the aggressive garbage rate incentive so that there's the moderate or the aggressive of the two, uh, paired with that every other week, small garbage level. They also noted they would like to see an increase in funding for targeted education and outreach, so to those larger families that might be more impacted, that if we were to move forward with a rate structure change, that we really do some targeted education. Um, so I wanted to make sure the council was aware of the conversations we've had with the sustainability commission before we move into discussion. Um, so really the direction that we're looking for tonight is first off, just interest in general in pursuing any rate structure changes. Uh, and if there is interest, kind of how aggressive is, as Lisa noted, there's the moderate side or there's that, that more aggressive, that seventy-five percent rate incentive. And then any interest in that every other week, small garbage service level. And that, the last piece here is just regarding the timeline, if council is interested in pursuing any rate structure changes, uh, what that timeline would be for implementing this. As staff has discussed this with other divisions like finance and utility billing, um, we have come to a recommendation that 2026 may be a good time to do this, um, understanding that we will be starting kind of contract conversations very soon here. Our current residential contract does expire in June of 2026. So, um, if we were to move forward in 2025, there might be, you know, disruption for residents with the new rate structure and then potentially disruption again in 2026 with different rates or potentially a different hauler, you know, whatever the direction of council may be. So that's something to consider regarding that timeline. Um, also to note, we do intend on starting those contract conversations with council later this summer. So there'll be plenty more opportunities to talk garbage and the direction of our contract. But, so with that in mind, again, we would love to open it up to discussion and any questions and really just hear your feedback. I know it's late in the evening, um, but we appreciate your patience, so.
Well, and I appreciate the presentation and the information and what I really appreciate is that I think what you brought back to the council was exactly what the council was asking you to bring back to the council. This is exactly it. I mean, the, the notion of this type of rate structure, the incentives, uh, the ways to look for reduction, waste reductions, but also cost savings, I think, I think you're, you're right on track here, absolutely right on track. And, I mean, from my perspective, pursue the rate structure changes? Yes, that's, I think, a no brainer. I think that's exactly what we were asking. And I think, I'm just going to take a guess and say this group is going to say aggressive, but, um, that's just a guess. And I, I think we're, I think we're headed in the right direction here. So other thoughts? Councilmember Dalisandro.
I, I do, I'm super excited. I also would, I'm making a shameless plug for the, the every other week garbage, uh, because I, I heard it all, all the time. We do have a number of folks who are single, uh, homeowners, um, maybe they're widows or widowers, they, you know, don't use the garbage nearly as much and everything like that. And if we can offer them a way to, to benefit from this as well, I think that that's just really great. Um, you know, if, if we have to model like, oh, every other week makes things, so we should do aggressive because every other week might kind of like, you know, modifies that aggressive, like, benefit because of the way things work together, whatever, we could talk about that. Maybe, maybe moderate is also right. I, I, I'm less, I'm less, uh, concerned explicitly between if it's sixty versus seventy-five, it doesn't feel like too much movement there. I, I mostly really love the fact that we are incentivizing the kinds of behaviors that, um, number one are proven, uh, and number two are necessary for us right now, right? So, um, we have, we've got, got a bit of a, a bullet on our backs here in terms of, uh, bullseye on our backs. There we go. Um, sorry, after ten forty-five, I become a pumpkin, I guess. I don't know. Um, I'm much more articulate at five AM, weirdly. Um, the, the, you know, the incentives are, are, are moving people towards programs that we want them to work on. We know we've had pushback on the, on the, um, uh, composting program, right? We heard a lot of pushback on that. Maybe this is the way that we can mitigate that for some of the folks who are just like, I don't use it, I don't want to pay for it. Well, you're paying more than you should for other things anyway, so maybe you should use this and get a real nice reb, like, you know, bit of incentive to, to, to lower your garbage rates. And so, um, I do really appreciate it. I'm super excited on my own bill to save eighteen percent. So I'm into it. Um, I think it's great. I think you guys did exactly what we asked you to do. I very much appreciate it. Thank you to our, our consultants as well because you're obviously very, very talented and, and an expert in your field and you've brought that expertise to, to help us out with this. So, um, just thanks all around.
Councilmember Moore?
Thanks, I'll try to be brief. The piece that I'm particularly interested is the conversation with the haulers. Um, so I, I fully appreciate the, the information, but to me, this adds a level of complexity and it might not be real complexity, but in the eyes of a business owner, it's complexity that I can use to justify rates. And so we could get these initial reductions and then as the haulers continue through, they could say, okay, because of this or because of that and this program, we have to adjust rates in the future, which negates some of this. So that's the piece I'm particularly interested is where the haulers at on this? Who are they also working with? Who has paid, who have pay as you throw programs, um, so that we can see that over a long term versus just the initial model?
Councilmember Carter and then councilmember Nelson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I can also feel myself fading very quickly, so I'm going to keep my comments short and sweet. Um, I also don't really have a very strong preference on the moderate versus aggressive, but I'm very supportive of the every other week. Um, and then I had a question around the organics because I believe that there was something in there about, um, potentially just giving everybody an organics like we do recycling. Um, and was that considered in the recommendations?
Sure, Mayor, or, go ahead. No, you.
Well, we, we looked at over seventy different models and so that was one of the things that we did consider, even though the council had made a decision when we rolled out organics that we were going to kind of do that universal fee, but people really needed to request a cart. As we were kind of trying to narrow down some of our options because we couldn't come here today with seventy different options to show you because that gets very complicated very quickly. Um, I think we decided to take that off the table and kind of keep that current model for the, the recycling and the organics of kind of that all pay model, but with the recognition that as people begin to see more value in doing those kinds of activities, that they are probably going to be inclined to do a little more uptake. We know already that our organics program is starting to see another little uptick and that's due to some of the, um, education and activities that we've had this summer. Uh, we had a very popular compost giveaway. Um, and so Laura is telling me that we've had, you know, several hundred signups just in this past month, which is great. And as that continues to build, um, those are the kinds of things that are going to really incentivize people to do it. I think, um, kind of given feedback that we've had from folks from the program, taking carts out to everybody is probably a very large added expense for the city. And if people don't understand what they're doing with those things, it also leads to more contamination and those kinds of things. So we kind of think that the model that we have is probably the right model, but we need more incentive to get people, um, adopting it.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, I just, uh, wanted to echo that I support the every other week and I think that that is made more possible and practical because of the organics. You know, one of the concerns had always been, you know, leaving it two weeks in the summer and the organics is still picked up weekly. I think it just makes it, um, work better for, for people that are looking to make that move. So I think, frankly, I think that every other week makes absolute sense. Be as aggressive as you want on the rest of it, so.
Councilmember Rivas?
Just a quick question. Um, right now, the entire city pays for the organics, right? But how do you get a container to put the organics? I don't have one.
Opportunity here. Mayor, council.
We practice, but it's, it's too small. Uh, we cook it, you know, and we use it for the plants, but it's too small and, uh, some of the garbage, some of the food ends up in the garbage. And I have a big container and I barely fill one third of it every, every week, so.
Yes.
Every other week is good.
Well, kind of back to what councilmember Carter was saying, the, the model the city chose for rolling out organics was to provide carts to those that requested one. So you do sign up, there's a form on the city's website to sign up easily or you can call utility billing. There were cities that chose to deliver carts to all homes. I think that's how Edina originally rolled out their program and there was a lot of pushback from residents, um, regarding receiving a cart that they weren't going to use. The haulers ended up picking up a lot of carts that weren't getting used. So the city did choose to roll out the program in that way.
So I think the answer to your question, councilmember, is you've got a cart on your way.
Yeah.
I just asked you, is the pushback in that area is that they're paying for a service that they're not using, but I, you know, I, I guess it's because we don't want to, uh, in a way, but it, it is very helpful to throw the organics into a different container as long as it gets picked up with, you say, it does smell pretty bad. Uh, but it actually, if you cook it, it smells like wet tobacco. You ever been to a place? It's, it's not bad. Yeah, if you cook it, because it, it aerates in the machine, you know? It's funny, but yeah, I would appreciate a, a container. I mean, and I can talk to some of the neighbors too that don't use it.
That would be great. And I think we're hopeful that this rate study, if we, if we do change the structure, that might help generate more conversation amongst residents to reconsider using that organics container because they really could save some significant money if they divert those food scraps into that new container.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just want to say again, thank you to the staff. Um, I, I happen to be able to work on this particular project with the recommendation that, that we brought forward. Um, and certainly, uh, you can see it in the minutes in terms of that conversation, that one thing I wanted to mention was we, uh, a big part of our conversation was whether or not, um, I could do, uh, every other week, having stinky diapers. Uh, and so that was a conversation and we did, we did take a vote on that. And so that was interesting to see, um, where, where folks landed on that. So that was not unanimous, but the decision that you do, do see before you, um, uh, that overall is, is unanimous from the sustainability commission. I thought you might want to know that, extra piece of information.
And I think the final point that I would add, I think your recommendation about the timeline is probably correct, just in terms of the contract negotiations and basically how long this would take to roll all of this out. So I think that's probably correct.
Great.
All right. Got what you need?
I think so.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counsel, we're pushing up against the witching hour. I'm going to move that we, uh, add fifteen minutes to our deadlines to adjourn no later than eleven fifteen this evening so we can finish our, our business tonight.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to extend to no later than eleven fifteen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Lucky us. Mr. Breckie, good evening and welcome.
Nearly good morning.
Nearly good morning, yes. Uh, thank you for being here. Thanks for sticking to that one.
Absolutely, yes. Just going to wait for a PowerPoint here, quick. Mr. Man, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, if, uh, if I could skip over some contextualizing here and get to these award recommendations, this is our Blooming Arts Partnerships Grant Program, our newest program that's now been around for exactly four months. Skip that. In January twenty twenty-four, we split the existing cultural arts support program, uh, into these two. This presentation is regarding the Blooming Arts Partnerships Grant, which is for outside applicants to the city. I should mention this, our review panel had representation from Park, City Council for the first time, Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, Creative Placemaking, and two Bloomington residents that were also former panelists on cultural arts support. Required materials and scoring are also a carryover from CAS previously. So with that speed round, these are our presentations, these two applicants here, uh, Concerto Dance and Alive and Kickin, appearing in ranked order for you here. And here's the full context of their ranking. Concerto Dance was our top ranked applicant. The panel had a lot of really good things to say about what they're doing. This is a jazz dance company. Their owner and founder is a Bloomington resident, just lives a couple blocks from here. And, uh, they, the, the panel noted their dedication to excellent programming, very clear DAEI goals, uh, they offer free lessons, other free events, they focus on the history of dance that leads to a lot of educational components being in their programming. They give an overall impression of being a very well-run organization and even though they are not currently Bloomington-based, they desire to be. And so they've offered multiple performances, classes, outreach opportunities in Bloomington, including in the Center for the Arts. They have been with us in the fall and the spring and they've been doing monthly classes, uh, in the last year. So the panel pretty easily recommended a full hundred percent of their request or ten thousand dollars. Second is Alive and Kickin, which is an established performance presence at BCA. They're actually here this week loading in, they're doing their rehearsals, they've got shows this weekend. They've been, uh, with the city for a lot of years, but they are a new grant applicant. In this process, uh, the panel review did find some feedback that, that actually led to a lower recommended amount. They noticed that a small percentage of their ticket sales are Bloomington seniors and wanted to see more outreach directly to Bloomington seniors in the future. Alive and Kickin's application had the statement of building awareness and trust within Bloomington communities of color. The panel wanted to see action steps, uh, to support that and then the requisite data to follow that, that would support those action steps. A substantial portion of the company budget is dedicated to employee salaries. They found that a little bit unusual for a nonprofit organization and they did also operate in a budget deficit that was not addressed in the application narrative. So compiled altogether in panel review, they recommend, they recommended a sixty percent fulfillment of their request, which comes to three thousand dollars. Now there is twenty-seven thousand dollars remaining in this fund. City is not interested in keeping this money. We want to distribute it in twenty twenty-four, so we intend to run a second grant cycle it, this year. We can get this published by the end of June twenty twenty-four. A deadline would be in October, which would put us back on track for award recommendations being presented once again just before Thanksgiving is when you'd see, see us again up here. Uh, the panel also recommended no repeat applicants admitted in twenty twenty-four, just meaning Concerto and Alive and Kickin would not be eligible for this. And of course, because this is a brand new program, there's just a need for greater outreach and advertising of this. We need to get the word out using all networks just so we have more applicants and we want to build these additional arts partnerships with the city. With that, uh, questions, and I'm looking for two actions tonight, uh, and apologies, I should say city council, not Park. Uh, approve the recommended amounts listed on the screen and a second action item to approve a second grant cycle in twenty twenty-four on the proposed timeline.
Thank you for the information. Uh, that, actually, my first question, were, were these two the only two applicants?
They were, yes.
So they were the only two?
They were the only two.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Were there other inquiries, or?
We had some inquiries, however, they came from profit-based organizations.
Ah, okay.
And so they were ineligible.
Okay. Council questions, thoughts on this? Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, just a quick thought, um, when we did this last time, I was deeply skeptical. Um, the Concerto didn't, hadn't done a lot in Bloomington, and it seems like they did exactly what they said they were going to do, and I stand corrected, so, thanks.
Thank you. And Councilmember Nelson, uh, to your point, they received a CAS grant last year, and they applied it directly to the city of Bloomington and performing here, so they, they really did run with it all and, and fulfill that promise.
Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, uh, I, I think this, uh, is a well-done program. Uh, I think, you know, in terms of the public, um, benefit, I, I see it there. My, my issue with this is the overall program, I think, you know, the manager shared, uh, that with you, and so again, not, I'm not want to, you know, I don't want to say anything about the, I think the panel did a phenomenal job, you know, everybody, you know, did what they were supposed to do, um, but I am, uh, very, uh, uh, set on trying to figure out long-term sustainability of the overall, uh, program, um, in terms of how this works and operates for those folks that want to have their, uh, programs, bring them to Bloomington, and then want to mature over time and be sustainable, and that's the question I have in terms of the, the current arts organizations that we have, and these new ones that we're bringing into the community. Definitely want to bring new folks in, but I also want to ask that question in terms of how we're going to sustain them from the long term. So for those reasons, uh, today, I'm not going to be supporting, uh, this process, but I'm certainly willing to sit down with you and have a, have more of a conversation, uh, around that.
Thank you for the comment, Councilmember Loman.
Council additional comments, questions on this? Councilmember DeLisandro.
As the, uh, council member got the chance to work with the team here, I just want to say, I'm grateful for the opportunity, thank you very much. Uh, you did a great job actually managing us cats as we were doing that. Uh, the conversation was frank, I think we had, um, good trust among the team early on, that was enabled in large part by your leadership, so thank you for that, it was really well done. Um, highly recommend if anybody else wants to ever get a chance at this one, especially in the fall, if we choose to move it through, it was super fun, and, um, the people involved are obviously very passionate about the work, um, so it was great. Uh, so thank you for including City Council on this. I hope that's part of what we continue to do.
Thank you.
Counsel, unless there are additional questions, uh, Councilmember DeLisandro, I would look for action.
Is it appropriate for me to make the motion since I was on the panel?
I won't call it inappropriate.
Okay, perfect. All right, so I'll first move to approve the 2024 Blooming Arts Partnership Grant Award Recommendations for Funding, Alive and Kickin for $3,000, Concerto Dance for $10,000, totaling $13,000 with $27,000 remaining.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve the 2024 Blooming Arts Partnership Grant Award Recommendations for Funding. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries six-one with Councilmember Loman in opposition. Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Councilmember. Passes five-two with Councilmembers Rivas and Loman voting in opposition. Councilmember DeLisandro.
All right, I move to approve a second Bloomington Arts Partnership Grant Cycle in 2024 on the proposed timeline. June 24, BAP application materials published to the Center of the Arts website after the closing of the first cycle. October 4th, 24, BAP applications due. October 7th through 18th, uh, 2024, application reviewed by panelists and finance department. Week of October 21st, 2024, review panel meeting for discussion, final ranking, award recommendations, November 13, 2024, award recommendations presented to Parks, Art and Recreation Committee, November 18, 2024, award recommendations presented to City Council, late November, early December, award distributions. How about that?
Second.
Auctions are next for me, I guess.
Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Carter, to approve a second Blooming Arts Partnership Grant Cycle in 2024 with the proposed timeline as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries five-two with Councilmember Rivas and Councilmember Loman in opposition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And as I said, thanks for sticking it out with us this late in the evening, greatly appreciate it. Um, after, in the fall, grants will, will move you up.
Sounds like a deal. Thank you.
We will move on, counsel, to our final issue, uh, final item of the evening, our council policy and issue updates, item 5.4. Uh, first off, just to recap our city council listening session, we set a record, I think, for the number of speakers in our listening session this week, had a number of folks speaking. Uh, we had, uh, Mr. Leo Milkie, Lindsay Frey Palmquist, Herb Brazilius, uh, Catherine Babcock, and Lowell Wenzel, uh, and I, those, those four, speaking, uh, in favor of the, the, um, EAW that we discussed earlier for the, for the stadiums that we were, uh, talking about. Uh, Mr. Lowell Wenzel had, uh, comments regarding the, the Nine Mile Creek project that is going to be getting underway, and, uh, we heard from Sally Ness, uh, her ongoing complaints with, regarding Darrell Faruk, uh, including non-compliance and code compliance and outlaw issues. And then, uh, we heard from, uh, neighbors with a, a neighbor dispute, a, a pretty significant neighbor dispute, so I'm, I'm, I'm going to hesitate to, to name them here and just basically say we had a, a pretty significant conversation and, and asked the city staff, uh, including our city attorney, our city manager, our city police, to take a deep look into this and see if we can't, um, resolve this, because it was a, a number of disturbing allegations between neighbors that, uh, you'd hate to see anywhere, but certainly among neighbors and, and hate to see that going on. So, that was our, uh, our listening session today. Mr. Verbrugge.
Mr. Mayor, you seemed reluctant to even ask, so I'll, I'll say no, nothing to add this evening.
Counsel, anything else to add? Councilmember DeLisandro.
I have one very small thing, I just want to thank the folks at, um, at the Coast Guard who have opened a recruiting center here in Bloomington. I got the chance to hang out as they did a ribbon cutting on Saturday afternoon. Um, the Coast Guard Twin Cities, um, is, uh, the first time in over a dozen years that they've had presence in Minnesota. Um, it's, it's a fascinating tale that's very similar to our tale of the police department. Um, they have a bunch of folks who signed up 20 years ago after 9/11, and they're facing retirements, and now they're working to overcome those and be proactive about that. Uh, the cool thing is, is they had a, a young person from, uh, one of our high schools actually there who had through the program, you know, that they advanced already here, um, they're saying that he was shipping out the next week after he finished graduation and everything, and so, um, and they're incredibly pleased with the talent that comes from the Midwest. Um, I got to meet, uh, a gentleman who is stationed in Duluth, works on all the tender and everything up there, uh, but happens to be from Bedford, Pennsylvania, which is 20 minutes from my hometown. The odds of you finding somebody 20 minutes from where you live, uh, after we've both been around the world is pretty cool. So, it was a great experience. Jess LaRue is the Chief Petty Officer in Charge. I highly recommend you walk in, uh, they are at Morgan Circle, if you remember the yoga studio that was on the corner of that spot behind the Red Lobster, um, they've taken over that area, it's a beautiful building, uh, of course, and a really cool spot, uh, for them to be there with all the transit and everything like that, they should get a good group of people, but, um, uh, you, you know, um, my heart goes out to military folks all the time, so, uh, really, really honored to be there. Also got to see two advancements, which was a pretty cool thing, I'd never seen that before, so. Anyway, uh, uh, if you know anybody who wants to join, uh, uh, the armed forces but isn't quite interested in DoD, remember, they still sit in Homeland Security, so it's not the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anything else, counsel? If not, counsel, I would look for a motion to adjourn this evening. We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening, no further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.[1769.11]